Good evening, everyone. It's about seven o'clock. Welcome to the Newbury Report zoning board of appeals meeting for June 22, 2021 via Zoom. My name is Mark Moore, Vice Chair, calling the meeting to order as our Chair Rob Chimpetti can't be here tonight. As always, we have our City Planning Director Andy Port driving the presentation visuals and managing the participation of attendees. With the City Planner Caitlin Sullivan poised in the wings. And before we start, we always want to recognize our note taker Gretchen Joy for her dedicated efforts. I will start with a roll call introduction to ensure that we have proper quorum. As I mentioned earlier, I'm Mark Moore, Vice Chair, obviously in attendance interruption petty is absent our chair. Now introduce each member and ask that they respond with here. Secretary Stephen Delisle, has he checked in yet?
I do not see him yet. He is actually here and maybe populating the. He might be having a technical issue because he popped in for a minute and then it disappeared.
Well, we will circle back to him as some are want to say right now in public forum. I will move on to member Ken Swan.
Hello, I'm here.
Excellent. Member Walter Chagman.
Here.
Associate Member Gregory Bennet.
Present.
Right? And.
Mr. Chair, I believe Stephen is here, but I'm not sure if he's unmuted.
Mr. Delisle, if you do, there we go. Thank you very much. And Secretary Mr. Delisle has checked in, so we do have a. A full quorum absent our chair tonight, and then we can move forward. Finding five members present, we have a quorum and can proceed with the meeting and all members when not recused will vote. For those new to the zoning board of appeals meetings and or new to this format, we find it helpful to describe how the meeting will flow. With the roll call completed, we will soon move to public hearings. I'll start by reading a description of the public notice to identify the application to be presented. I will then ask the applicant to present their case for lack of a better word. And it's often the applicant's legal counsel or the applicant's architect that presents and describes the proposed changes to the property. Once the presentation is complete, we will then proceed to one of the reasons these meetings are called public hearings. The board will hear a public comment, although still virtual, the public comment portion of the hearing entails asking any resident attendee wishing to comment to come forward and be heard. These comments are vital to making the public form a robust exchange of thoughts and ideas. I will ask anyone in virtual attendance who wishes to come forward and be heard to raise their hand electronically utilizing the raised hand icon at the bottom of their screen. Andy Porter, I will announce those that are recognized to speak. Please remember to unmute yourself before you start, as I occasionally have forgotten to do this, and it makes for a very awkward silence. Before starting to comment, we also ask that you clearly provide your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments succinct and to the point so that others who wish to comment can do so efficiently. While commenting, feel free to state questions you may have for the record. But please allow the board to fulfill their role in eliciting additional detail in the questions from the board portion of the hearing. Thanks for your understanding. We will proceed with public comment until all raised hands are exhausted and all who wish to be heard are heard. Once all public comments have been heard, that portion of the hearings closed and we move on to the aforementioned questions from the board. The board, often inspired by public comments and questions, will then ask the applicant or the applicant's representatives for any additional detail needed in their decision making process. Once the board has exhausted their questioning, I will close that portion of the hearing and move on to deliberations. Deliberations in the public forum is another cornerstone of the public hearing format. Everything the board discusses about the application is done in public or virtual public. So that all in attendance get to hear the thought processes and discussions of each member and the board of us as a whole as it moves towards its collective decision. During that process, it sometimes becomes evident that the board feels it needs more information or that the board is leaning in opposition for one reason or another. The board may then move to continue the application until it can obtain the desired information. Or if a denial of the application is looking like a possible outcome. The board often gives the applicant the opportunity to request a continuance to address the board's concerns at a future date. At a future public hearing before the deliberations close and the board proceeds to a formal vote. Which will then have consequences for the applicant with respect to timing and costs. Once deliberations are complete and no continuance has been requested, I will then seek a motion from the board. And when seconded, I will call for a vote on the motion. Because we use Robert's Rules of Orders, you'll hear a motion on the application made in the affirmative or to approve. Even if the board member making the motion plans to vote to deny the motion. With four votes in the affirmative, a motion or application is approved. I will then close that application and move on to the next hearing on the agenda, applying all the same rules. When all the applications on the agenda are heard and addressed, I will close the public hearings portion. And the board engages in a business meeting to approve the minutes from our last meeting and address any other items that are appropriate at the time. Okay, I've called the role. We have a quorum. Let's get started with the public meeting. Our first application is to Neptune Street, Patty and Bampus care of Lisa Mead, Tellman and Costa. Application 2021-26 special permit for nonconformities, adding a dormer on the rear roof of a preexisting nonconforming structure. And this was continued from the 525 meeting. And might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman Costa, 30 Green Street, Newbury Port on behalf of Patty and Bampus. And as the Chair indicated, this special permit was opened a couple of meetings ago. And we had a conversation about whether or not the dormer could be reduced in size at all. And so the applicant went back and met with her structural engineer who's doing this design, Jelena's engineering. And reduce the size of the dormer by bringing it in to be two feet off the edges. And up from the bottom, it would be one foot six inches. If you go to the next slide, please, Andy. So additionally, there's been a reduction in the number of windows from five to three. We'll look at this in a minute. Which are now eight over eight rather than the six over six. And further, there's been a reduction in the number of skylights from three to two. To meet the dormer guidelines. The dormers would have to be inset from the edges, three feet, six inches. And one feet six from the lower edge of the roof. Is you know, the applicant is tempting to get more space. And I'm going to put that in quotes because it's actually modest, but very important given, as you know, the. South end is a is a place of inches and not feet. To give her some more living space in the study closet and bathroom that's underneath that current salt box side. So if you go to the next slide, please, Andy. Nope, slide three. Great. So here is the proposal now. We have the existing conditions, as you can see on the top and the bottom are the proposed conditions. You can see the proposed rear elevation now has two instead of three skylights. And the number of windows on the rear of that new proposed dormer is three instead of what was originally proposed to be five. I would remind the board that the project does not add any new conformity, nonconformities to the lot. Nor does it intensify any existing nonconformities. The project, as you know, consists merely of this shed dormer being added to the rear of the structure. Originally, it added 140 square feet to that second floor living space. And now it's down to 128.98 square feet. The footprint of the structure remains the same as does the height in the setbacks. If you go to the next slide, Andy. And here is a side elevation of the proposed. Dormer. I want to just correct a couple of things or at least clarify a couple of things that were brought up at the last meeting. The, there were some statements made by several of the folks commenting on the project relative to. This being one of, I'm not going to even say exactly, but like 10 in the state or something like that, salt boxes of this vintage. And so Ms. Bampus reviewed the salt boxes east of Route One in Newbury Port. And there are eight in Newbury Port alone, 212 Water Street. Between 1725 and 1750 to 65 Water Street, 1710, 31 Summer Street, 1750 to 1800. 10 Madison Street, 1750 to 1823 Lime Street, 1700 to 1750, 35 Lime Street, 1775, 18 Atwood Street, 1725 to 1775. So. The comment that this is maybe one of few in a much larger area is just not so. We didn't review how many would be in Ipswich or Essex or Gloucester or anywhere else on the Cape. Or in on the South Coast. I wanted to clarify that because I think that that is really important. Additionally, the applicant has provided four additional letters of support. 13 Neptune Street, 188 Water Street, 44 Federal Street and one Goodwin Street. That's on top of the 178 Water, 198 Water, 200 Water, 208 Water, 1 Neptune, 5 Neptune, 6 Neptune. And 53 Purchase Street letters of support. I also provided at the last meeting, we don't need to go through it all over again, photos of the eclectic. Nature of the architecture throughout this neighborhood and general area and vicinity. And with that, I think that the board can find that this proposal, particularly as revised. Does not, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. This house has seen a number of changes over the years. And this additional change will allow this house to be more livable. And to last a significantly more period of time. In addition to the work that Ms. Bampost has already done to make it structurally sound on the inside. So with that, we'd request the board approve the revised modifications. And a special permit for nonconformities for the structure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Me. At this point, we will open up the hearing for public comments. Again, remember to raise your hand using the icon and when you're called, please remember to unmute. And give clearly give name and address.
Mr. Chair, the first person we have is Glenn Richards.
Go ahead, Mr. Richards.
Thank you. Before you start my two minutes, let me just say that I'm speaking for myself here tonight, Clem Richard, 6th Con Street. And not on behalf of the Historical Commissioner or anything like that.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. And I'll try very hard to get within two minutes. The, so this applicant is seeking from a special permit for nonconformities on the section XI. And but I would like to point out that they have consistently focused. X very narrowly on this issue of an upward expansion or upward extension of an existing nonconformity. Due to this dormer, I think we all know that those are often granted. And I'd point out that nowhere in this applicant submissions, not in the original memo from April 14th, nor the memo from April 28th, nor the memo from June 21st, nor the presentation of the May 25th. None of them makes any mention of the fact that this applicant had brought this project before the Historical Commission. The Commission reviewed it and voted unanimously unanimously that the dorm was inappropriate and detrimental to the subject property and the neighborhood. And then imposed a one year delay, demolition delay, which as you probably know expires this coming August. At that time, the applicant could build a dormer which complies with the guidelines adopted by the city. Even though many of us would feel that would be unfortunate, but she could. But she's not even proposing that. The applicant is seeking approval for a bigger dormer than the guidelines allow. They require three feet on either side. And this, we're talking about two feet in, even in this revised version. So it looks, it's looking very much like an end run around the limitations, both of the zoning ordinances and. Like the D Cod and the ordinance themselves, as far as what. Kinds of dormers are okay or not. So just for, you know, respectfully remind the board that the language in the ordinance and I'm quoting here. The power to vary the application of this zoning ordinance must be sparingly exercised and only in rare instances and under exceptional circumstances peculiar in their nature. And with due regard to the main purpose of this zoning ordinance to preserve the property rights of others. You know, so I don't, you know, so as far as hardship, I don't think they've they've met the standard for that. You know, that we know that personal financial hardship and that things of that nature are specifically excluded. I think if you look at the plans, you have to go back to the first plans where there are floor plans shown. You see where they have taken some room from that 18 foot bedroom upstairs to reconfigure. But to do what? To create a bathroom that's like 13 feet by 10 inches, almost 14 feet by 10 feet? I mean, that's necess that's, well, I digress. So anyway. I conclude, I'll just refer back to that first memo of April 14th, and we heard it again tonight. The proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would submit that they have not demonstrated that proposition, but rather have tried to ignore it completely and hope that maybe nobody will notice. But please do take notice and please don't create a path for this or future applicants to ignore the preservation ordinances by seeking a special permit or variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
The next person we have is Tom Culter John.
Go ahead, Mr. Culter John.
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Oh terrific. Tom Culver John, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. The trust opposes in the strongest terms possible the request for a special permit. I would like to point out that most of the salt box houses cited by Attorney Mead. Are not first period houses like to Neptune Street. So I'd just like to clarify that. A slight change in the shed dormer plans is not an improvement. It will alter the streetscape and the structure and would not be appropriate. It would be a tragedy to lose the unique shape of the salt box roof line after well over 360 years. This application is clearly detrimental to the neighborhood. It will change forever the relationship between both portions of this two family. Joined house. One side would then overpower the other. Size, scale and massing would change forever. The smaller portion of the house would be negatively impacted as well as the close neighbors. You have on record a letter of opposition from the owner of the other portion of this very building. They are connected and both sides need to be respected. The proposed change would be a tragedy, not only for that particular house, but for the neighborhood and Newbury Port. We have so very few first period houses remaining that they have become precious and very rare. Please don't let them ruin such an important part of Newbury Port's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culter John.
I do want to note for the callers, we do have two callers. It looks like this evening. For those folks who may want to raise their hand and speak, you can press star nine to do that. Give another moment, Chair. I don't see another hands raised at this time. I do have one more. Yep, come on more. Patricia Pecnic.
Yeah, Patricia Pecnic for Dove Street. Respectful of all interests here, I do support the applicant's right to install a conforming dormer. But I oppose the granting of a special privilege. The fact that section nine on nonconforming uses governs the special permit applications across the city doesn't mean that it can be read as divorced. From the intent of the special permit criteria in the D Cod ordinance itself, where the word historic appears 69 times and 40 times. Just within the procedure and criteria section on special permits, section nine doesn't nullify historic preservation review criteria. In addition to the interest of the applicant and a butters are the interests of the city as a whole. I'm reading that phrase from the ZB A website. The city as a whole, the public war welfare. Which is the third prong of the test and it's in a larger public's interest. That you protect the character and integrity of the district and land values by denying the special permit. But even if you decide under section nine alone, the request should be denied because the nonconformity section reads. It is the intent and purpose of this ordinance to discourage the perpetuity of nonconforming uses. Except where such extension will be in the general welfare. I don't think the desire from our headroom in the house's second bathroom is really conducive to the general welfare. Section nine also asks you to consider the location of the structure. The upward extension of the structure at this particular location will not generally benefit the residents of the city. And it will be harmful to surrounding land uses. That's language also from section nine. Because the surrounding land is in the D Cod and we as a community have already agreed through our ordinances to deem historic preservation. As the best use of our land. And finally, it's according to the Colonial Society of Massachusetts that there are only 10 houses in the Commonwealth. That have been documented as containing structural evidence of being as old as this one, not just deed or oral tradition stuff. According to Richard Irons, a master restoration mason, this house has that structural evidence. I may not have been quoted accurately by all, but my conclusions were stated clearly at the NHC meeting. And were the product of consultation with experts on historic New England, Massachusetts homes. And I'm very happy to share that information with anyone who requests it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pecnic.
And the next person we have is a caller. Your last digits ending in 407. You'll need to press star six to unmute.
Hello, this is Reg Bacon. Can you?
We can, Mr. Bacon.
Oh, that's great. Well. First of all, let me say that I am really not very comfortable being the squeaky wheel. Speaking at the last several zoning board meetings, but frankly, sometimes you have to squeak. I would like to speak on two points directly related to the zoning law in this case. The first one is on dimension. This. This can be denied simply on the basis that it's too big. I would probably be calling in again, even if this were a fraction of an inch too big. And that could never be interpreted as arbitrary and capricious. It's just goes by the tape measure. The second point is that on the question of more or less detrimental to the neighborhood. Well, the destruction of the roof line of this iconic 17th century home. Affects not only the neighborhood, but every taxpayer and voter from border to border in our city. Third, the applicant has a year. alternative after the Historical Commission rendered its opinion. Present attempt to bully the. Judge. Oh, I didn't know I had to stop at the big red light at State and High Street. By the way, our pro preservation zoning laws that we have in effect now. Are very much like that traffic light in that they are not a restriction per se, but they're for the public good. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. And that's what this part is for squeaky wheels. For and against. That's what we want to hear. Anyone else with a hand raised?
Yeah, next person we have is Stephanie Nikicich.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Nikicich, 93 High Street. You are not really being asked to approve a dormer. One can install a dormer by right in the D Cod, which is most of our National Register District. As unfortunate as I think this right is. You are being asked to approve a roof addition so large that it is an upward extension of a nonconforming building. I would like to ask a question through the chair, if I may. Livability or living space is an issue raised by the applicant. The newer large window in the attic combined with plans for the raised roof with new skylight windows in the attic. Must mean that there is or will be added living space not reflected in the application. The assessors database currently counts the attic as zero square feet for living area. Although it is a 440 square foot in gross area. This half house as it exists is nearly 2,000 square feet if the attic is added. Given the livability argument, it might be interesting for you to know the total living space being added in this plan on both the second floor and the attic. You can deny this application and the applicant will still be able to install a dormer. It will just have to be smaller. A smaller by right dormer could be a more reversible alteration. Just in case in the future, someone would like to restore this building to its historic iconic form. Please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nikicich.
Next person we have is. Looks like the hand has disappeared. Oh, back again. Patty Anne, she was on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go right ahead.
Okay, Patty Anne Bampus, number two Neptune Street. In December of 2018, I saw this house three times before putting an offer in. It was sitting on the market for six months, as many people know, and no one had come forward to purchase it. Between the offer and the closing, I called the planning department three times, asking many questions. About the Fruit Street District and did those regulations apply to me and my projects? I asked about replacing windows, doors, siding, et cetera. And was reassured that I was not part of that district and could do what I wanted as long as I followed the application guidelines for the various departments. I believe in early March 2019, I brought early dormer drawings to the planning department and it was recommended that I pull the sides in one foot. To keep the original roof line visible. So that is what I did. I did the best to follow any advice and follow all the rules and procedures that were in place in the city. Mr. Bacon made comments at this meeting and at the last meeting. About being a good steward and I really believe that what I have attended to so far in the last two years. And I couldn't go into much depth in the newspaper, but will definitely help this building survive another 200 years. There were many. Issues that were not resolved that I have worked diligently to take care of. I asked the members of the zoning board to review the new dormer guidelines from Cambridge and compare them to my project. On page four, it reads under shed dormers. In terms of cost effectiveness, the shed dormer is often the solution preferred by owners for adding living space to the attic story of a gable roof building. The ideal shed dormer will make an attic space more livable while preserving the building's roof line. Then on page seven. It states, when all design alternatives to increase living space in the attic have been explored and failed to meet the owner's needs, the raising of the roof. To create a new story may be explored. This approach may be of last resort permitted by the ZB A. It also recommends on page seven that the windows in the dorm should account for at least 50% of that face. This guideline clearly focuses on the attic living space. While my project clearly focuses on the second floor living space. What you may not know and was just brought up before me getting on the phone. You might not be able to see on the drawings is that two of the three rooms have no ceiling. The bathroom and the back room, I removed the ceilings to make the rooms feel bigger. They're relatively small and narrow space. And when I was taking out the vermiculite, which I also have in the attic. I took those ceilings out because it was only a little triangular slice. So I wouldn't be able to increase living space in the attic anyway. I do not believe that these guidelines are applicable to my project as the style of homes in Cambridge are a different period. And the salt box style. And, you know, I just want to let you know, my neighbor who is right adjacent to me does oppose the project. He did ask me for my engineers' contact information. In 2020 and did have drawings of his own done. My dormer would potentially reduce his, his view to the water. But he may follow up after me. I, I have no idea. I get along with them. I get along with all of my other neighbors. I've got a lot of support for this project. So I'm asking that the zoning board, please consider that I purchased this home as a private residence. And I'm really hoping to live in it as fully as possible. And I've also really tried to do what I was supposed to do. I've asked lots of questions. I've taken lots of advice. I've filled out different applications. I mean, I, I really thought I was going the proper course. So I'm not trying to make anyone upset. I'm just trying to live in a space that's tight. Maybe get my stackable washer, which is sitting next to each other, side by side to be stacked so I can have. So I could have a linen closet, you know, just some really basic, small things. And if you have any questions for me, I, I hope that I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bampus. Anyone else?
Next person we have is Diana Kinosian. I hope I pronounced your last name correctly.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much. So I'd just like to say that I did.
Before you start, could you just, I'm sorry.
Diana Kinosian, 42 Temple.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I did look at this house when it was for sale and I, you know, contemplated buying it. But I realized that it was such a beauty of a house. It was so historic and gorgeous. And I decided that, you know, because I would want to buy both sides, I didn't have enough money. So I decided to forego it. And I wish I didn't because I think it was a beautiful house. It was gorgeous. It should have been left alone. It did not need to be redone. I understand that the current owner needed it to be living area. However, the person that lived there, lived there for 30 years as it was. It was beautiful. It did need some updating, but it did not need to be the way it is now. I cannot wrap my brain around driving by it. Solar panels. You know, just it's, we have air conditioning units outside. It's just different. I, I'm, I'm so sorry for the person that bought it because I know she's getting a lot of feedback that is negative. But she needs to understand that she bought something in our town that was a treasure. And we don't have many left. So we need to really wrap our brains around that as a board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinosian. Anyone else?
We do have Patricia Pechnik. I see you raised your hand again, I think.
Yes, is it okay?
Sorry, go ahead.
Additional comment?
Yes, Patricia Pechnik for Dove Street. I just want to port, point the board's attention to a letter from Adam Weisman that was submitted opposing this project. And he asks the ZBA to respect the property line and to treat the property line that divides two and two and a half Neptune Street as a true property line and uphold any protections, including a three foot, six inch setback requirement from the property line. I just, since Ms. Bampus mentioned him, I thought I would point out his letter. It was posted rather late, but it is there.
Okay, thank you very much. Duly noted.
I see no other hands raised at this time, Chair.
Okay, give it one more second. All right, I'm going to close that portion and move to questions from the board leading off. Yes.
I was just wondering, this is Lisa Mead. I was just wondering if I could just respond to a couple of the things that were pointed out prior to questions from the board, or how would you like to handle that?
Could we see if the board maybe gave the opportunity during questions? And then if there's something at the end you feel wasn't addressed, we'll, we'll get to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So in questions from the board, we will start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I just have a couple of questions. Attorney Mead, I think you mentioned during your presentation that the, the interior living space that would be added by the addition of the dormer was initially 140 square feet and then with the moving of the sidewall in another foot from one foot to two foot on each side. And coming up the six inches, it went down by 11 square feet to 129 square feet. Is that right?
That's correct. 98, right.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. Okay. If, if you went into, if it went in another foot and a half on each side, what would the square footage change be there? Do you, do you know that? I don't mean to, to catch you off.
I'm a lawyer, not a math, a lawyer, not a mathematician, but I'm going to do, use a little deductive reasoning. So if the, we just brought it in a foot, right? So a foot and a half and we lost 12. So I think you'd lose another, you know, 12 to 16 feet, maybe something like that. The, the issue is, the issue, Mr. Delisle, is that it then, the, the bathroom doesn't meet code requirements.
Right, okay. Okay. What, I, I do have another question for you, Attorney Mead. One of the, one of the prior speakers, I think it was Mr. Richards, mentioned that the, the one year period imposed by the historical commission is not going to run until August. How, how does that affect what, what you're doing here?
Right. So Mr. Richards is correct in the, in that regard. And, you know, to be clear, the applicant isn't doing an end run. The applicant is trying to get permits that at the end of August or whatever date it is in August when the year runs, that she be able to do her project unless somebody comes and offers her money to buy her house. So the, there's no end run here. The applicant went to the historic commission for demo delay as the applicant was required to do. They said no and imposed a one year delay. And so the applicant is now applying for this dormer. And she has a right to do that as a special permit for nonconformities. As this board knows, we disagreed with the, with the zoning code enforcement officer's determination, but applied for the special permit anyway. It doesn't require a variance. We're not asking to vary the terms of the ordinance. The DCOD doesn't apply here because there's no demolition under the DCOD. So we're not trying to get around it. It just doesn't apply. So the permit that's required according to the zoning code enforcement officer's special permit for nonconformities. And so if this permit were to be issued, it couldn't be acted upon until after the demo delay period expires.
Okay, yeah, that's, that was the question.
Yes, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for the answer. I think, Mr. Chairman, that's it for me for right now. So I would like to yield the rest of my time.
Fair enough. Thanks, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swan, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The, I couldn't tell from these drawings, how big is this roof? Like, how wide is the roof and how long is the roof?
So, Andy, what if you go to the next drawing down? I don't know that I have. So I don't know, Mr. Swan, hang on a second. Let me see if I can have it on a separate set of plans here. The roof is 24 feet wide.
Okay, and the length?
Well, I guess the length, what are you talking about from the, from the ridge down to the eve? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Is it on?
It's a 32?
22 and a half, I believe. No, that's the height. I don't, I don't know, Mr. Swan, what that measurement is, but if you want to ask me, oh, 32.
It seemed to be 32 on an earlier drawing from your first time around. That's why I was wondering. I was just trying to.
Um, that, no, that's how long the house is in the long ways. I'm looking at the the house is 32 feet from Neptune Street to the rear of the house. I'm looking at a drawing that shows that and it's 22 feet wide. So the house in the rear is 22 feet wide. And I don't know that we have a measurement from the ridge to the eve. I don't think so. I don't think I have that on these plans, Mr. Swan.
What I'm trying to get at is, is I think one of my colleagues asked at the last meeting, what percent of the roof are you covering with this dormer? And if we don't know the width and the length of the roof, we can't answer the question. And I, so I was just trying to get at that. Do we know today what percent?
Mr. Swan, I don't, I don't recall that question having been asked at the last meeting, so I apologize for that. So what I can tell you is that all of the roof will be covered except for two feet on either side and one foot six up from the bottom.
Yeah, I get that. I get that. I'm just trying to get a sense of the, I mean, from my perspective, if I looked at your older drawings and tried to figure out how long that roof was, I think you're proposing to cover about 80% of the roof with a dormer.
I don't, I don't disagree. I, I think it's probably close to that.
And my concern is that a by right dormer, you know, one that you wouldn't have to be here to ask to do, will be more like two thirds of the roof. And, and that's really what we're talking about here, whether the additional massing of the larger dormer is a concern and is more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that's what I was trying to get at. So, but, but that's all right. The, my next question has to do with the use inside here. You had an earlier floor plan of what you were going to do inside this dormer. You know, how much was a closet? How much was the bathroom? Do you have an updated drawing to show what you're trying to do here?
So I didn't, I didn't submit that on our presentation, but I believe it was submitted on our plans. And I will, I'll tell you exactly what it is. It's the same thing that we were doing before, except for smaller. So the study is going to be six feet, eight inches by 10 feet, 11 inches. The closet is six feet by 10 feet, 11 inches. And the bathroom is 14 by 7.2. 230 square feet.
Okay, if that's, if, I realize that's not in your presentation, but that, if that's in part of the things that you had presented earlier, perhaps Andy could put that page up because it would just help in asking my question. Yeah, for that page right now. If you can find it, put it up. If not, give you a moment to find it.
So those two, the two dormers, while Andy's looking for that, the two skylights that exist on this dormer, that's, that's open all the way down to those two rooms. So as you look at this drawing, the bathroom's on the left and the, the study's on the right and the closet's in the middle.
Okay. Sorry, Ken, and looking at the drawings that were submitted, I'm not seeing the floor plan in there in the revision packages. So I'm looking back at the original.
So yeah, if you go to the original, Andy, it's obviously slightly smaller than what was proposed before.
Okay, so, so that's what it was before it lost a foot on each side and grew by six inches on the bottom, right?
Correct. So the, the existing condition is on the left. That's what it is today.
Yeah.
And the proposed conditions is on the right, but smaller.
Right. So now we brought that in a foot on either side, but we've made it a little longer on the bottom by a half a foot, right? That's what we are. So I guess what I'm trying to, I, I'm trying to go back to your comment to my colleague, Mr. Delisle, where you said that we're in danger of the bathroom. If, if you were to shrink this another 18 inches on each side, the bathroom would now not meet code. So I'm trying to find, so there's the bathroom. So you're saying the bathroom is 1310 by, I can't read the number there, but you're saying if you shrunk that by 18 inches, it wouldn't meet code?
Yes, there is an issue. And look, I'm not a code compliance person, Mr. Swan, and so I want to be really clear. It's been represented to me by the engineer that it, however, the bathroom is laid out, that reduction because it's also a height issue. It's not just a width issue, would not meet the proper code.
I mean.
It would be around the shower area.
So, so that's if you took the space out of the bathroom. You could take it out of the study or the closet. I mean, do they have code issues too?
I'm, I'm not aware of that, Mr. Swan.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to understand your comment that you just made around, we can't bring in a by right dormer because it wouldn't meet code for the bathroom. I was just trying to understand that comment. I guess my next question has to do with the letter of support that came in. I, I'm not support, the letter of concern from the occupant of the other half of this house. Andy, if you have that letter, if you just put that up, I just had a question regarding that letter. Sure, just a second. Yeah, is this the Weisman letter? Yeah. So I guess this is from the son of the person who bought the other half of the house because unfortunately, I guess his father has passed away recently. That's where this letter is from. Anyway, he says down toward the bottom here, if you just scroll down a little bit here. Is that the end of the letter? Is, is that the very bottom? Oh, yeah, the very bottom, he's saying, I ask the zoning board to treat the property line that divides two and two and a half Neptune Street as a true property line and uphold any and all zoning requirements over Texas, including the three and a half foot setback. So I mean, this, this sounds, by coincidence, this is the same three and a half feet number that a by right, by right dormer, is that what he's referring to? That if, if you were to set the dormer back three and a half feet, you would not be here in front of us because you could just do it? Is that what he's referring to?
So I, Mr. Weisman didn't talk to me about this letter, Mr. Swan, and so I don't know what he's referring to. But there is no, I mean, the setback requirement would be, you know, the actual setback requirement, of course, is 10 feet, right? Because this is, you know, this is the R2 district. So, but it's a zero lot line house because it's split down the middle. So it's pretty existing nonconforming. So that nonconforming setback is actually on the lot line. So I suspect he's referring to the preferred dormer design, which of course is not a requirement, but that's what I suspect he's referring to. But I don't, I don't know because I, Mr. Weisman didn't talk to me about this.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to understand how this thing fit in. Okay, my next question is really, I, I guess my question is about the massing here. I mean, the whole reason you're here is because you were asked to get a special permit. I mean, we went through in our last meeting, you asked to us, you asked it to appeal the decision of the code enforcement officer not to even require a special permit. But I think we voted that down unanimously. So now we're here today because you're proposing to essentially upward extend a wall very close to, you know, two feet off the, off the edge of the building, a building that's only two and a half feet off of the road, Water Street, which is a very a very highly public trafficked way. And I guess, I, my issue is really around the massing therefore that that creates on such a busy road. And, you know, it's not like this dormer is hidden in the back. So I guess you're basically asking us for this extra 18 inches on either side because you could do by right a smaller dormer. And I, I guess I'd just like to ask, why is it so critical on, on a dormer that's so exposed to the road that this ex, why is this extra 18 inches on either side so critical?
So, Mr. Swan, for the homeowner, it's critical because it's about the livability of her home. And given the neighborhood and the eclectic nature of the architecture in the neighborhood. And, you know, quite honestly, this is step back from Water Street. So it's not right on top of the extension of the existing wall, sidewall that is on Water Street. And so it's critical because it's about the livability of her home, her place of residence, the biggest investment that she has, just like it would be for anybody else. And she has put a lot of money into that home already to make it livable and to last longer. And so it's critical because it's her home. And she has met with and spoken with a number of neighbors, absent, obviously, the immediate neighbor who's not in favor of this. And they all support her. They understand. Um, and they all support her. They understand what she's trying to do. They understand and see what she has done and the care she has put into her home already. So um, it's critical to her. Um, because A, um, it's not, she does not believe, and we do not believe that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, and B, that it's not over imposing on uh the sidewalk and the public way um in the Water Street area.
I, I'm confused by the comment that's not on Water Street. Andy, could you put up the plot plan here? I thought this thing was two point six feet off of Water Street. Could you put up the?
I didn't say that it was on Water Street. It stepped back from Water Street.
It's set back two point six feet.
The, the dormer stepped back two point six feet from the edge of the roof line, which is set back from Water Street.
Okay, I, I thought I read in the application that this house was set back two point six feet from that sidewalk that shows in this picture.
Yeah, hang on a second. Yep, the side, the left side is um two point six feet. That is correct. And then the dormer, the proposed dormer is two feet.
Right, and I, I get that, but I, I'm just saying this is not a dormer that's in the back. This is a dormer that's right there. So anyway, I, I, I don't really have any more questions. I appreciate you addressing my questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Uh, Mr. Chaglin.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Um, I, I guess I wanted to go over a, a question or a discussion we had the, in the last meeting. I believe by right, this dormer, if it was three point six feet uh stepped in from the edge of the building, could be, uh, could be constructed by right. And you're proposing two feet. So there's a, there's a foot and a half of relief on each side or a total of three feet in width that you're asking for, for relief on this dormer. Is, 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 I, maybe I'm simplifying it, but is that what it comes down to?
That, that, that's correct, and it's through a special permit, of course, not a variance. So.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that, that, that is correct, and.
And I think we had this discussion last time. By right, this dormer would be only slightly smaller, three feet smaller. Um, and you're asking us to buy special permit, allow it to be stepped back two feet rather than the three and a half. Because by right, you could go to a three and a half, uh, you could do it by three and a half feet. And, and I think we discussed this last time. The massing will be very, very similar. I mean, if it, if it is covering eighty percent of the roof right now, another three feet's gonna be seventy five percent or seventy six percent. And that, that, that's all I had. I, I just wanted to make sure I was, I was still understanding um the proposal with the change. I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chaglin, Mr. Bennet.
Uh, my colleagues have thoroughly uh uh covered the waterfront with respect to any questions I had. I appreciate their thorough uh questioning uh attorney made, so I have no further questions.
I'm sure, no pun intended as well. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, and again, and I would, um, I, it's been brought up a couple of times, but I, I do want to reiterate the point that um, the applicant does not need to show hardship to do this. That would be a variance. This is not a variance application, special permit, and it was mentioned a few times, but I just want to make that clear as it was brought up in comments that it was there was a hardship hurdle that needed to be met, and there isn't one. Um, I'm going to echo Mr. Bennet and say that I think um my fellow board members have asked uh some good questions, so um I don't have anything further. Um, Mr. Delisle, do you need me to circle back to you?
Um, no, uh, that's okay. Uh, I'm good for now.
Excellent. Attorney me, they said that if we didn't address what you wanted to, did, have the questions come up that you needed to have come up?
Um, I, I did. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair for that final opportunity, and um I, I have addressed the questions as has the board um through the give and take back and forth and.
That was the hope.
That, that's right. So thank you very much. We appreciate the board's consideration.
You bet. You're welcome. Uh, so with no further questions, we will now move on to deliberations on the application. And again, we'll go back and start with Mr. Delisle.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moore. So for me, I think uh the question that I did ask um in the prior meeting, which was what it was the percentage of the roof that was going to be covered by the dormer. Um, that, that still looms large for me, and I, I appreciate uh Mr. Chaglin's discussion with Attorney Meade of a moment ago. Uh, you know, indicating that the difference here is is three feet that we're talking about. I suppose that's the relief as, as Mr. Chaglin put it. Um, this, the house, though, we know the width of the house is twenty four feet, so that's about a different, that it's twelve and a half percent is what we're talking about, twelve and a half percent of the, the width of the roof. So the, but that's sort of that's sort of a false uh that's sort of a false equivalency, I think, because what we're looking, the, the difference that we're supposed to be judging here is not what they're asking for via the special permit application versus what could be done by right. But the, the inquiry is what they're asking for versus what it is now. So it is a large dormer that's being proposed per the special permit. And I think that it is so large relative to the roof itself that it does create massing issues. And that's where, that's where I am on this deliberation.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, Mr. Swan. I think my colleague said it very well, Mr. Delisle. I, I agree with him. I think there are, you know, if this was a dormer hidden in the back that nobody saw, it'd be one thing, but this is right front and center. And when you cover eighty, eighty percent of a roof, that's a lot of massing. So I, I, I just I, I have an issue with massing on this proposal, and that's where I stand. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chaglin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, I, I guess from my discussions with the attorney need, um knowing that uh by right, this dormer would look very, very similar to what they're proposing. I, I, I can support the, the application. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. It is large, but by right, they can have a large dormer. What they're proposing is slightly larger. Uh, but, but I, I, I see it as uh insignificant when, when you compare it to what they can have by right. So I can support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Shagnon. Mr. Bennet.
And I uh will agree with uh my colleague, Mr. Shagnon here. I, 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 I take the point regarding the massing. However, I look at the massing from a different lens. I look at it relative to uh the neighborhood and when I strolled through the area, uh, actually a couple of times. Uh, I did not find in my opinion that the massing that we're talking about here would be substantially uh detrimental to the neighborhood, given the existing architecture, structures and size and massing of structures in the neighborhood. So uh, I understand this is one where reasonable minds may differ, and uh it is a uh, a challenging uh analysis for us here, but uh I would, uh, I would approve the uh, the request in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um. For me, I guess I fall in the camp, uh, a combination of Mr. Chaglin and Mr. Bennet. I, I, I do agree that it's a big change. But um, as my colleague, Mr. um, Chaglin said, it it would be a big change. Um, even if it was done by right. So I, I guess the uh the question for me comes down to um what Mr. Bennet just referenced, would it be more detrimental as presented? I agree that I don't see it being more detrimental into my eye. Uh, to me, and I'm not an architect, layman, but when I look at this, this historic home, it seems like anything that, that preserves the slope of the original roof would be better. And to me, the wider version is better than an eyeball sticking out of the roof. Um, so um, as presented. Yeah, I, I think I'm okay with um with this not being more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I don't have some massing I can overcome when I look at other, other buildings and neighborhoods. So um, I can, I can support it as is. But straw poll as I look down shows me that this might not be enough to get through.
Right, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We would like to um continue this matter um for two weeks if we could.
Okay, so you have requests for next meeting. Um, I do note that the next meeting had been advised and just looking at it is rather full with six applications already.
Okay.
Does the, so the next meeting would do the twenty seventh. The twenty seventh of July.
Of July.
Yeah.
That's fine. We'll continue to July twenty seventh.
Okay.
Please.
So if requests to continue this application to July twenty seventh, do we have a motion?
I'll move that this uh matter be continued to our meeting scheduled for July twenty seven, twenty twenty one.
I'll share, and I'll second that.
All right, we have a, a motion uh to continue this to the meeting on the twenty seventh made by Mr. Bennet, second by Mr. Chaglin. We will now go to a vote. Uh, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Uh, yeah, please bring roof coverage numbers this time. Yes.
Duly noted. Mr. Chaglin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Moore's, yes, that's all in the affirmative. Um, this is continued to July twenty seventh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, it is for seven Harbor Street. Um, Douglas DeShane, uh, attorney for the owner. Um, application twenty twenty one dash twenty seven, a special permit for nonconformities for the construction of a second story over an existing footprint or pre-existing nonconforming single family home on Plum Island. Might we hear from the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Douglas DeShane from Finneran and Nicholson, thirty Green Street, Newburyport, uh, representing the owner. Uh, seven Harbor Street Normandy Trust, Robert Higgins trustee. Um, I would like to introduce the other uh people that are with me that tonight, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first Scott Brown, who is the architect on the project is, is on the line as well. Uh, also with me this evening, Jacqueline Bennett, the beneficial owner of the home. Um, Ms. Bennett, in addition to owning this home on Plum Island, as some of you may know, has for over twenty five years run her international business here in Newburyport in four commercial buildings she owns on Water Street. So she's a longstanding um business um owner in town. Um, I would like to also let the board know that prior to coming before this board, we did in fact meet with the Newburyport Historic Commission. Uh, and they did determine that the house had no historical significance uh with respect to its prior use and with respect to its structure. So um, we are not dealing with a historically significant building uh in any manner. Um. If I could move on to the next slide, please. Uh, a quick project summary. Uh, we are proposing an addition over a portion of the existing first floor of the single family structure. The proposed addition is two hundred and sixteen square feet in size. Uh, the proposed addition, the purpose for the addition is to provide a closet space and a small sitting area, desk area in the master bedroom. Um, for whatever reason, this home, which has its master bedroom on the second floor, has no closet. So it is quite an inconvenience for Ms. Bennett uh having to go up and downstairs to get to closet space. So the main purpose here is to add a closet space, and there will be a resulting small little desk area as well. Um, the proposed addition has been designed to minimize any visual impacts to abutting properties. And quite frankly, to enhance the aesthetics of the existing structure. With respect to, next slide, please. Uh, with exact, with respect to the existing conditions, uh, this structure dates back to the early nineteen hundreds. The property has been and will continue to be used as a single family residence by Ms. Bennett, and that is an allowed use in the zone. Uh, the property is pre-existing non-conforming uh, uh, on a number of bases. First of all, the existing lot is not conforming as it is, um, does not meet the area requirements. Uh, nor does it meet the required frontages. Uh, as you can see, we have seventy feet of frontage where a hundred and twenty is required, and we're at sixty five hundred and four square feet where twelve thousand is currently required. With respect to the existing structure itself, it is also non-conforming as to side yard setbacks, rear setback, uh, lot coverage and the FAR. We could uh go to the next slide, please. Again, the proposed addition will not create any new conformities. It will, however, increase our FAR slightly from thirty six percent to thirty nine percent. The addition will extend the pre-existing side yard setback nonconformity upward as defined by uh your zone, the zoning determination letter. Uh, and also the proposed roof line will be impacted to exceed the height of the existing structure. Um, however, I, I, as we all know, what we are changing here would be the average mean height of the roof as, as measured by uh the city ordinances. We are not proposing to uh increase the, the the peak height of the roof, the peak itself is not being impacted. Um, as this is a dormer style addition, uh, we are not proposing to affect the peak height, but we do affect the mean height. However, as you can see, even with the change, we are still well below um, the height limitations in the zone. Uh, at, we will be at twenty point five feet uh with the proposed addition. Next slide, please. Um, I just wanted to provide you a copy of the um, the chart showing the dimensional requirements, just to verify that the numbers that I've I've given you were part of our uh part of our application. As you can see, we listed out for you the pre-existing nonconformities that I previously discussed. Um, with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, with the board's permission, I'd like to turn things over to Mr. Brown uh to give you a quick overview of the uh, you know, the architectural styling that was chosen, why, uh, alternatives that we considered, and and why we came to uh, to rest on this proposed uh dormer addition. Scotty, yeah?
Yeah, thank you, Turner DeShane, Scott Brown, the architect for the project. Andy, if you could please just uh scroll forward to slide number eight. Great, thank you. So these are the existing photos uh of the house. Uh, in the front uh bottom right uh corner of this slide. Uh, that is the house as you see it from the front right corner or the street side. Uh, bottom left is uh the house on the, uh, from the front, street side or, or left, left side corner. And this is where we're proposing to uh put that um second story uh addition, as you will. Um, the two photos on the top are, of course, aerial views taken from the water. Uh, I will, I do want to point out that the uh photo in the upper right hand corner that uh, you know, our addition is on the right side of that photo. And you will note that the uh budding structure, structure, which are, those are the folks that are most directly impacted by this. They're, because their house is slid farther back uh away from the water, uh, I would argue that the impact to them uh is somewhat de minimis. Uh, can we go to the next slide, please, Andy? So these are existing condition elevations, of course, at the top. This is a house as you see it now from the street. Uh, lower left hand corner, this is the house as you see it now from, from the water. And uh, lower right hand corner, this is the left side of the house. Uh, you know, where we are proposing to do all of our, all of our work. Next slide, please. So, you know, as of our state, we know what we're proposing here is sort of a, a second story expansion within the existing footprint. You know, the expansion is located at the back left corner of the structure. We are expanding the second floor slightly, and as Attorney DeShane's had already mentioned, we're adding a closet, a small work area off of what is the only uh second bedroom on the second floor level, and it is indeed a very small bedroom. You know, we've done our best here to, to make the design of this uh shed dormer-like. But we do have some structural limitations which have prevented us from, from making it a true shed dormer. Uh, as already stated, technically, we are increasing the height of the structure. And just looking at this uh at a glance at, at the numbers, it would appear to somebody that we're raising the height of, of the building, but but we are not doing that. As we all know, we, we measure building height to the median roof height. And because of uh this addition that we're doing, uh, does not meet um, the city of Newburyport's requirements for a dormer, we do have to take our mean height uh, uh, to the height of this, this new roof. Um, the highest point of the structure is the existing ridge and um Um, the highest point of the structure is the existing ridge and, um. That will remain, uh, the highest, uh, point of this structure. You know, as already mentioned, this did go before the historic commission a few weeks ago, uh, they did determine to be. Uh, not to be historically significant and, uh, they had, uh, no comments relative to the design of it. Uh, next slide, please. So we did have an eleventh hour revision to this project, uh, you know, I bubbled those changes in the lower right hand corner. Um, Ms. Bennett did speak to all of the abutters. And at the request of the butter that is most immediately impacted by this. We did, uh, remove some windows, uh, at their request. So we've not formally submitted, and I did say this is an eleventh hour change, we've not formally submitted this to the planning office. But if this project, uh, shall receive approval this evening, we would certainly be happy. To submit a revised copy of, uh, this drawing. Uh, to the planning office for the record, again, the only changes that we've made. Are in the lower right hand corner and I have, uh, bubbled those. And, uh, finally, you know, I think this is a modest request, a modest expansion, uh, expansion of this small house and, uh. You know, I certainly hope that the, uh, board agrees with me. And, uh, with that, I will hand it back to, uh, Attorney DeShane's, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Scott, if, um, if we could move on to the, uh, next slide, please. Thank you very much, so I wanted to give the board an overview of, um. The authority under which we're before you and why we believe that our proposed, uh, addition is in conformance with your, um, special permit requirements. Um, as we know, the, uh, purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance applicable here. Uh, is to discourage the perpetuity of nonconforming uses, except where the extension. Will be in the general welfare and not harmful to surrounding land uses. Um, first of all, I would like to point out that we will not be creating any new nonconformities. Uh, with our addition, which is, I believe, the first standard. Uh, secondly, the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, uh, structure, uh, on a number of bases. The proposed addition is relatively modest in size at two hundred and sixteen square feet. And as I said, it's being built over the, a portion of the existing first floor. As such, we will not add significantly, uh, to the massing and scaling of the building. And, um, we did try to reduce massing and scaling by using a dormer style extension. And, um, we've done it at such a height that it will only allow us to meet the minimum standard room height. For the closet and the sitting area so that it can be occupied, so we've. We've made sure that our ceiling would not go up any higher than minimally required. Um, again, as we've mentioned a couple of times, we are adding to the mean roof height. But we are not increasing the peak height of the structure, which I know is important to many of our neighbors. This, because it is on the left corner of the house, uh, it will visually impact very few neighbors, if any. Um, as required by the bylaw, uh, by the law, applicable laws, this will be built in accordance with. Local and state building and conservation regulations, and so. We will be protective of public health and safety and the environment with our addition. The design is in keeping with the existing architecture of the home. Uh, so the addition will blend well with the existing home and quite frankly, if someone were to. Be off island while it was built, I, I, I would suggest that many of them wouldn't even notice that it was added on, uh, given the design. Uh, the addition is arguably is a aesthetic improvement to the structure. So it will certainly add to the value of the structure and in turn will add to the value of surrounding homes. Uh, certainly a benefit. The proposed addition will not adversely impact anyone's use and enjoyment of their structures. Uh, by their owners, uh, this will not have any impact on our neighbors' ability to enjoy their homes and to, um. Well, to enjoy their homes. Um, we will have a, overall, a de minimis impact on the neighborhood. And certainly will not be significantly more detrimental in any ways, uh, given that. The, the impacts are minimally detrimental, if at all. Uh, and as I stated at the beginning, this addition will allow for a master bedroom closet. Where none exists now and there's no closet on that floor in any event, so. Uh, and it will provide a small desk area for the owner to work from home. Uh, we've all learned over the last year and a half that, uh. Uh, working from home can be very productive and, and sometimes required. Um, last thing I'd like to mention, and I'm sorry I didn't put it on the slide, was with respect to. Considered reasonable alternatives, again, the sole intent and purpose here is to. Create a closet on the second floor bedroom where there is none. Um, and that there really weren't any alternatives to adding space that wouldn't increase the footprint. Or increase the, the, um. Uh, lot coverage, so by building it over the set, the first story. Directly adjacent to the bedroom, we were able to achieve the goal. What, while having minimal structural, um, and massing and scaling impacts. Uh, if I could go to the last slide, please. Um, with respect to the, uh, Plum Island overlay district, uh, ordinances that we have to meet. Um, the purpose and intent, as we know, is to reduce damage to public and private property resulting from floodwaters. And also to limit the expansion of nonconforming single family structures. So as to prevent exasperation of existing problems with density and intensity of use. Um, certainly this addition being built on the second, uh, floor. Over a portion of the first will not impact our ground coverage. And therefore will have zero impact on the ability of the lot, uh, to, uh. Hold flood storage capacity. Uh, nor will it any way affect our neighbors' abilities to, uh, deal with flooding, it won't, won't cause any. Uh, limitations to the flooding, so we, we're having zero impact on, on flooding. Um, the proposed addition will not add to the intensity of the use of the home. Uh, it's a modest addition, uh, and it is being built to be a, um, a closet. For the most part, there'll be no increase to the footprint. As such, we will not add significantly to the massing and scaling. Of the structure, and although we are having a slight increase in the FAR, it will probably not be noticeable. And certainly will not impact existing density, um. Uh, to a measurable extent. Lastly, the proposed addition will not cause an intensity of the use. We're not adding an additional bedroom, we're at, not adding new living. Uh, room or additional area for people to, uh, live in. Uh, we're only adding a closet and a small sitting area to the existing bedroom, so. Uh, we do not believe that that will result in an intensity of use, uh, for the structure. Um, lastly, I'd like to close with, uh, our, our efforts with respect to our neighbors. Uh, Ms. Bennett has reached out to all of her neighbors. Uh, she did send them a letter, a copy of all of our plans with an invitation to meet. And discuss any questions, concerns they might have. Uh, a number of the neighbors, uh, took her up on that. Uh, and so she did meet with a number of the neighbors and discuss the proposal. Um, and as a result of her outreach, uh, we have provided to the board. Uh, a petition of support signed by thirteen of our director butters. Um, I don't know if anyone will speak in opposition, but I can tell you that all the neighbors that we've met with and talked with. Uh, were more than happy to sign our petition and felt that it wouldn't have a detrimental impact. And I would like to point out that most importantly. Um, the three homes that I would consider being most impacted by this proposed addition, which is the. The house to the immediate left. Um, and then the two houses to the left and the back, in back of us. Um, all three of those neighbors did sign the petition of support. Um, and had no issues with what was being proposed and felt that it would be, uh, beneficial, uh, to the neighborhood, so. Um, we have worked very hard with our neighbors and in fact, as Scott mentioned. Uh, the director butter to the left who did sign our petition. Uh, he did ask Ms. Bennett if she would eliminate some of those windows on that side. Just so that their privacy would not be intruded upon. And Ms. Bennett has agreed to do that, and as Scott's mentioned, if, uh. If, if we are successful this evening, um, in order to keep our promise to our neighbor. Uh, we would be submitting a revised plan showing the elimination of those windows. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would ask your consideration in granting this, um, request. And we are certainly happy to answer any questions, uh, the board might have, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. DeShane. Um, at this time, we'll go to, uh, ask for public comment. And remember to raise your hand electronically and unmute yourself, giving a name and address before you give such comment.
Not seeing any tiggers, Chair.
Sounds like it might be quiet out there. All right, going once. Going twice. And public comment is closed. Uh, we'll now move to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. DeShane, just to, um, confirm, this proposed, uh. Expansion of the existing structure will be on the existing footprint, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, thank you, and, uh. Now, question for Mr. Brown. With respect to the, uh, the materials to be used, could you just describe what you're going to be proposing with respect to the siding and windows and the like?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Delisle, well, we, we, uh, intend to match what is currently there and, uh. What is currently there, the siding is, um. Uh, vinyl siding, uh, albeit a high quality, uh, vinyl siding, if you could, if there is such a thing. Um, so that's what we will be doing, matching what is there. And, um, uh, same thing with the windows, we'll be, uh, matching, uh, the, uh, same quality of windows, uh, that are currently there, which I also believe are, uh, vinyl as well.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, I have no, uh, additional questions, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, we'll move on to Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, thanks, um. So in looking through your application, um, this house was, was, was it purchased by its current occupants in two thousand and nineteen?
Yes.
Um, okay, uh, you know, since that time, there's been no change to the PIAD regulations and it's a nice house in a nice location. But, um, one of the things we're advised from by our planning department. Um, is that, you know, the PIAD there is a very fragile environment. Um, and it, you know. The, uh. They say the office is not concerned with any particular small scale project addition or modification, but rather the cumulative impact. Of, of what will, based on the current trend of Plum Island projects and approvals, otherwise become hundreds of smaller additions, are arguably in direct conflict with the PIAD purpose statement. You know, the PIAD purpose statement talks about basically the fragile environment and its infrastructure. Um, so I guess my issue here is you're already significantly above the density standard at point three six FAR. And you're proposing to go to point three nine. And if the entire Plum Island went to point three nine, it would be really tough on that whole infrastructure. So my question is, did you consider, um. To get your closet space and things that you're trying to do here. Of living within your existing point three six FAR, you know. Converting some other space or taking out some space when you add space, I'm, so I, I basically, I'm not sure whether to ask. The lawyer or the architect here, but did you consider a way to live within the density that you already have?
Thanks. Uh, Scott, would you like to take a shot of that?
Yeah, Scott Brown, I'll stick to the project, if we could just go to slide eight, just look at the existing photos. You know, perhaps maybe this is not, maybe, maybe the photo on the bottom left hand corner is the best, you know, um, best photo here. So part of the challenge is, uh, the second floor here is that. You can, you can begin to see, and I believe those, those, you know, uh, the sill height of that window up there is about thirty inches or so. So you can begin to see sort of like all of this, this entire bedroom at the second floor. Um, is underneath the roof structure. And these are, you know, basically knee walls, to, so to have, you know, a decent sized closet. Um, with like a full site, full sized door, you need to come well within that footprint and that's just not, uh, was not, um, going to be viable. So really, we had no choice but to go outside of that structure right there. You know, right where, you know, in, you know, Andy has his, his, um, uh, magnifying glass. We had no choice but to go out that and create some more space, so once we go outside that volume, that, that of course helps. You know, uh, contributes to the, to the FAR ratio. So we, you know, and sure, we were not able to do it within the existing footprint of the second floor. Okay, because I, you know, I've seen other folks with some pretty creative plans for how to improve their houses and, and not increase the density, so. All right, that was really my only question, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chagman.
Just got a couple of questions, I, I guess going towards the far as well. Um, when I looked at, um, you know, the deed documents, uh. And, uh, I guess the GIS or MIMAP. It shows that this house is only seventeen hundred and sixty eight. Uh, square feet of living space, do you actually have the living space documented, I couldn't find it on any of your drawings?
I believe it's a lot higher than that, my calculations have it at, at one thousand eight hundred and fifty five square feet.
Okay, even if it was one thousand eight hundred and fifty five, if we divide that into the square feet of the lot, you're. You're still only at twenty seven, twenty eight percent. I'm just curious how it got up as high, it's thirty six percent.
Well, I think I could answer that, Scott, because I, I did that analysis myself as I was getting prepared for tonight. Because I agree that I was wondering how the far was so, so high and what I was able to determine that. Uh, it's because they included in that calculation. Um, such things as the patio, the deck. Um, let's see, let's see, uh, the crawl space. Um, and.
I, I, I mean, I, I agree, to get it up that high, you'd have to include all that, but.
Yeah, you know, um, uh, this is coming back, I ran, you know, we had run this math quite a while ago and I do believe. That, um, the basement is included in part of this calculation, because I think that this basement has certain portions. That are over, um. I think the number is now that we have to, is six feet, six feet of height.
Yeah.
You know, if it's over six feet of height, we now have to include that in the calculation. Which in certain instances, and this could be one of them, really skews the numbers.
Okay, it's.
Oh, I double checked, and it does include the outdoor patio area, the deck and the crawl space underneath, and that's what was driving, you know, in my calculations. Why the number was so high.
Yeah, those shouldn't be included, though, that's not required in our FAR. Um, I, I mean, it's, I think it would still come out that you're over the twenty five percent, but I, but I think it's a much softer number, like twenty seven or twenty eight. And your increase only brings you to, uh, maybe thirty or thirty one. And the only reason I bring it up is, uh. We've, we've had many of these in front of us where, you know, thirty isn't so bad. It's not great, but thirty nine is really high, if that thirty nine is a real number, that's. That's really high, I agree with my colleagues, that's a big number. Um, I, I just couldn't get the, the numbers to come out and, and that's the reason I asked. I've got no other questions, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chagman, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I, um. I had the same, uh, concern regarding the FAR and it would be helpful if, if we. Uh, had a clear understanding of what that figure actually is, I, I, I am mindful of the comments that, uh. Mr. Swanton made regarding the. Uh, you know, the overall concerns that we have to address here as we look at Plum Island, I, I am heartened by the fact that. I don't see any intensity here of the use, that is, this doesn't appear to me and you've represented that. Uh, this addition cannot be used as a bedroom, for example, and it's simply a closet and a small sitting area, so. It will not create additional demands on the infrastructure of Plum Island, uh, as I see it. So tho- those were my, I guess, questions and concerns, uh, I, I find the, the design very tasteful and I commend you on that. Uh, with those comments, I've. Uh, conclude my observations.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bennet. And my colleagues have, have covered it really well and zeroed in, I think, on the, the aspect of this application that probably provides. And my colleagues have covered it really well and zeroed in, I think, on the the aspect of this application that probably provides most questions, and that's the FAR. It certainly I don't have any questions as far as it doesn't expand the the footprint. It seems very modest. It's not adding to intensity, as Mr. Bennet said, but getting some clarity on whether or not we have an accurate number and and what the actual number is would be helpful.
Chairman Chairman Moore, Scott Brown, the architect from the project. I I'm just reviewing my my notes for the project, and I can confirm that that number did come from our office. And we did include the basement.
Okay.
So, which is why everyone's else else's math doesn't make any sense. Because, you know, we are including portions of the basement that are over that, you know, six foot height. So that's why these numbers are so high.
Okay.
My my, this is Ken Swanton. Chair, could I ask a question regarding that?
Sure.
It was said earlier, you may have included the deck. Do you think you included the deck and the patio?
No, we would not have done that.
Okay, because my, you know, usually our code enforcement officer looks at this stuff very carefully. And she would have counted the basement if it's greater than six feet, but she never would have counted a deck or patio. So I'm glad to hear you say that. Thank you.
Yeah, it can't, you know, the numbers came from our office and they're you know, per the, you know, planning offices new regulations for calculating this stuff.
And she double checks these things, I think. I mean, she's not on the call anymore. But Andy, doesn't she look at these things when they come in, double check them?
She does look for these. I I don't know. In the in the case of the deck and so forth, I'm not sure why those numbers are included in there. But I imagine if she looked at it, she wouldn't have, she would call that out herself. But I just agree that perhaps the numbers need to be looked at again if there's an issue there.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, it was, this is Attorney DeShane. It was my statement that I believe the patio was included. And where I got that was not from checking with Scott, as I should have done. But rather, I did an analysis of the living area and the gross floor area of this, of the structure as as defined by the assessor's office. And I I erroneously assumed if they included the patio and the decks in the gross living area, that then transformed into the FAR. But by all means, I apologize. And obviously, Mr. Brown is the expert on that determination. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we would certainly be happy to provide the board with a more precise calculation of the FAR proposed. And existing in that I think those numbers will show to our advantage, quite honestly.
I appreciate that clarification. Let's, I think we're closing questions. Let's go to deliberations, and we'll see where we go with this.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask just one additional question?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, can you give me us an order of magnitude of the of the percentage by which you believe the FAR is overstated in this application as we sit here?
As a result of the basement? Yeah, and I can tell you exactly what it was, what, you know, exactly what it was. When we initially calculated it, the existing FAR was point two seven. So over the two point five threshold, and the proposed FAR was point three one. Only at that time, we realized we hadn't calculated the basement, which then we needed to do.
Okay.
So, you know, the the basement has significantly skewed the numbers upward.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Brown, I'll follow up with one question, too. Did you say part of the basement is six feet? And therefore?
Correct, yes.
They all must be. How much of the basement is over six feet?
I would say probably off the top of my head, maybe fifty percent.
Okay. And what's the other fifty?
Just off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll just ballpark it here. And then what would you say, does it vary for the other half of the basement or?
Yeah, it's it's a crawl space.
It's a crawl, okay.
Yeah, a couple of areas that are crawl.
Okay.
Mr. Moore, can I ask a follow up question?
Go right ahead, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you. Just for for clarity's sake, Mr. Brown, the importance of the six foot basement height line of demarcation is because of six foot and above is included in the FAR and less than six feet is not included in the FAR. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Delisle.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no, any further questions? All right, we'll close that and move on to deliberations. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think after hearing the presentation by both the attorney and the architect in support of the application, I am of the opinion that the the lot coverage for me is more critical than the FAR, because we've had these discussions about FAR over the the past year or so. And I just don't really love the FAR as a metric here as a determinative metric. I think that the the fact that the lot coverage is not changing and the intensity as the the, there is no increase in intensity of the use, as Mr. Bennet noted, based on the application here with the with the extra space being used as a closet and as a sitting area, which certainly would be different if you were talking about additional bedrooms or additional bathrooms. And so for for those reasons, I I'm inclined to 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 support this application despite the the sort of unsettled nature of the FAR calculation.
And we should also be reminded that we are, you know, special permit nonconformities and looking at size massing, whether it's more detrimental to the neighborhood as well, and in all our discussions, I didn't mention it upfront, so.
Sure, I'll I'll speak to that as well.
Yeah.
I I don't, I don't think that there's really any difference, you know, with respect to the the size and massing here, where they're adding some additional space and doing some additional things with the roof here. But under the circumstances, relative to the the other houses on Plum Island and in the in the in the the immediate vicinity, I think that as far as being more detrimental to the neighborhood, in this particular instance, that's not the case.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah. You know, the plenty, the planning department's comment about, you know, even small changes cumulatively add up. I mean, it's hard to think of a smaller change than adding a closet. I mean, this is a small change. But nevertheless, you know, I do think the FAR, imperfect as it is, is probably the best metric for density on Plum Island, if we're concerned about the infrastructure of Plum Island and the fragile environment there. And, you know, we're the ones, unfortunately, on the ZBA who have to decide what's more detrimental to the PIOD. And I I just think point three nine FAR, and I realize some of it, you know, half the basement counts because it has headroom. But they could tomorrow convert that high headroom half of the basement into rooms. So I mean, it's, and if everybody did that on Plum Island, who had tall basements and got to point three nine, it would have a huge impact on the fragile ecosystem that we're supposed to be thinking about when we look at the, you know, what's overly detrimental to the PIOD. So I usually agree with my colleague, Mr. Delisle. But in this case, this case, I I am not enthused about it's not just this house, any house going to point three nine FAR. So I I can't support this.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagman?
Yes, thank you. I guess I have to agree with Mr. Delisle and the the way he approached it. I know in previous discussions we've had, the FAR is a tough one for us sometimes to wrap our heads around, especially when it includes things like half of a basement. And and where I think the the lot coverage comes into play is a little bit more important, because that's more of a density thing. I I do agree, if this was adding a bathroom or a bedroom, a large FAR might might be of concern, but because it's not, it's if you will, just bonus space, closet and the sitting area. And I think it's very well done. It's a nice looking home as it is today. This this addition will be fine. I can support it. And 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 I think even in light of this large FAR of point three nine, I I can support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. Mr. Bennet? Who's muted? If you didn't, if you're speaking, Mr. Bennet, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Happens to the best of us.
I agree with the analysis put forth by Messers Delisle and Shagnon. I also am mindful of the of our obligations to to assure ourselves that we are faithful to the PIOD requirements. I find that we are here, and I think my colleagues have said so, because there's no increase in density here whatsoever. If this were a bathroom or a bedroom, my view might very well be different. However, this is not going to increase any impacts on the infrastructure of Plum Island. And for that reason, I find it consistent with the neighborhood. And the design is tasteful. And it satisfies the requirements for the special permit for nonconformities required for a decision here as relates to this application. For all, for for those reasons, I would I would approve this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. As for myself, yeah, I I can't see this project being more substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's it's modest, again, as my colleagues have said in in support. It's not going to add intensity in its design of itself. I am mindful of Mr. Swanton's admonition about the basement possibilities and the FAR as being one of the while imperfect numbers, something that we lean on. But when I look at this, it's really the only issue that I could find is is the number itself and how it's calculated. But it's it's amazing to me that the number is as large as it is with just a bump out or as the building stands. So I just don't see it being more detrimental to the PIOD because of the lack of intensity with the addition. So I'm with my colleagues in support of this, so. That's where I am with this. So unless there's any more comment to be made, we will close deliberations. And look for a motion to vote on this application.
Here, this is Mr. Shagnon. I'd make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for Seven Harbor Street, file number twenty twenty one dash twenty seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. I would ask maybe that we mentioned the updated plans, the new window plans as presented tonight.
The updated plans of the second story having a reduced number of windows.
Excellent, thank you.
If if I could, this is Andy Port.
Yep.
If I could, just because of the latest arrival of the revised information, Scott had mentioned in a drawing in the presentation, if we could also make, if that could be incorporated, the the motion to approve that the revised plan be submitted to the office prior to the issuance of the building permit.
I believe that's reasonable.
Yeah. I moved, we'll include it.
So moved, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chagman, and thanks for support. So we have a motion to approve with conditions, and we have a second.
I'll second that, Stephen Delisle.
All right, motion to approve, Mr. Chagman with conditions, second by Mr. Delisle. We now go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton?
No.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That's four in the affirmative, and the application is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. So we move on to next on the agenda. Is one sixty one Water Street, David and Patricia Ansack, care of Lisa Mead, me, Teller, and Costa. Application twenty twenty one dash thirty three, special permit for nonconformities to construct a one story addition on the rear of preexisting nonconforming structure. Might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Lisa Mead, me, Teller, and Costa, thirty Green Street, New Report, on behalf of David and Patrice Ansack, as you said. And with me this evening is the project architect as well, Scott Brown. This project is at one sixty one Water Street. You go to the next slide, Andy, please. The property is located in the WMD and the DCOD. And obviously, then there are overlapping regulations, because it's also in a floodplain. Currently, there's a single family home here. And Patrice and David would like to construct a single story addition to the rear of the home. The structure is listed as contributory on the district data sheets for Water Street. It was having been built around eighteen seventy five. There is no Form B for the property. However, the proposal does not trigger the DCOD review. The property is preexisting nonconforming, and the WMD, it requires a ten thousand square foot minimum lot size. The property's four thousand twenty six, which is consistent with this row of properties along Water Street. The minimum required frontage is ninety feet. The property has thirty six point twenty eight feet on Water Street. Side setback requirement is ten, and the front setback requirement is twenty five. Here, the property has a five foot one west side setback and a three and a half foot front yard setback. The structure's height is twenty six feet, which is also nonconforming, because the maximum allowed in the WMD is twenty five feet. A portion of the property is in the AE flood zone with an elevation twelve. The finished first floor, however, of the structure is at fifteen eight, and we'll address that in a moment. So all of the, importantly, all of the new proposed finished area and living space will be at that fifteen eight. And there will be no mechanical equipment located in the basement of the new proposed addition. So therefore, all of the living space will be above the floodplain. And in addition, Scott has shown flood plain flood vents on the structure as well. If you could go to the next site plan, please. So our proposals to construct this one story addition in the back. And you can see it, if you blow it up a little bit, Andy. So it continues the sideline setback nonconformity on the westerly side, because the house is kind of square to the street, and the sideline runs at a little bit of an angle to the northeast. It does go to five one in the back, but it's set back, as you can see. So it's still further away than the front setback at five eight. Or it's, excuse me, it's a little closer than the front setback at five eight. So there's an exacerbation of that sideline setback. It does meet the sideline setback on the easterly side at more than ten feet, so it's okay there. And so that is the intensification of the rear setback. I mean, excuse me, the sideline setback. So with that, what I thought I would do is have Scott go over the proposed architectural plans for this addition.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. If we could just move forward to slide number eight, please? You said eight, you mean five? Eight, wow, my eyes are failing me at this late hour. Slide six. Six, okay. Okay, so you know, what we're looking at here, these are the proposed elevations for the project. And and what we are proposing is is very simply a a one story family room addition off of the rear of this this very small house. It is a very clean project, meaning that it has very little impact, you know, on the existing house. We've set both sides of of this addition back from the sides of the existing house. And this is one of the things that that most folks like to see when when adding on to an older structure. It is one story, so we've been able to keep the height of it down. We are mimicking some of the, but not exactly matching, some of the existing existing details of the house. We are proposing to use high quality materials, including clad wood windows with simulated divided lights. The windows in the addition The windows in the addition will be a higher quality than the replacement windows currently on the house, which were done by former owners. Also proposing cedar clambered siding to match what is currently on the house. And of course, we are planning to use other rot resistant materials which which do hold up well, hold paint well and and do look great over the long haul. And as Attorney Mead mentioned, this isn't a floodplain. So we're required to keep our finished floor above that elevation. Fortunately, the the finished floor of the house is already above that elevation. So in terms of our requirements with the addition, we are required, building code does require us to put flood vents. And those are those sort of two rectangular shaped things that I'm showing on both the right side and and left side elevation. And you know, off the back of the house, we are proposing a small, modest sized deck. So I think all in all, I think this is a modest request that that really has no impact on anyone. And I think it will be a big improvement to the livability of this house. And with that, I will hand it back to Attorney Mead. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So the criteria under section nine is whether or not there's any new nonconformities created. And here there are no new nonconformities. As I suggested to you, the westerly side nonconforming setback is extended along that westerly side, but no new nonconformity is created. And then the question is whether or not the proposal is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. Here, as Scott said, the petitioner proposes to add a one story addition to the rear of the structure, which is set back from the existing walls. And so it is tucked in behind the existing structure. It is barely visible from the street. So if any of you walk down Water Street in this area, these houses are, you know, are narrow lot. These lots are long and narrow, and so you really have to stop and look back to be able to see it. So it's it's barely visible. It will only impact the neighbor on the west really to the most. We have a letter of support on further the backyard of the petitioner, abuts the city, New Report wastewater treatment plant. And we don't believe respectfully that this proposal will have any impact on that. The addition is modest in size and has been designed to match the architectural style, massing and scale of the existing historic structure. And then, as I noted earlier, and as Scott pointed out, the petitioner and architect have been mindful of the flood zone requirements. And the flood vents will also be installed in the new addition. And any living space will be above the floodplain levels. And so we believe with that that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure and that the board can find accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. At this point, we will encourage comments from the public. So if anyone out there, please raise your hand. When you recognize unmute and give your name and address clearly. No raised hands. I don't see any public comment and closing in three, two, one. All right, public comment there has been done. We will now move on to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Don't really have any questions regarding this particular application. I did have one one observation. But I think that the letter of support from the abutter is the butter to the east, not the butter to the west.
Right. It's true. I misread my notes. That's true, Mr. Delisle. I actually wrote east on my notes. I apologize.
That's okay. No problem. One, one, I guess, since we're here, Attorney Mead, one question. I'll ask Mr. Brown is how those flood vents work.
Good question. Well, like basically they're a little bit their size and their size, they're basically the size of like a CMU block. And they're designed, once they, once the water hits them, they they open up. And they allow the floodwater to come in. And and really, the the whole idea is it's about sort of like having equal pressure inside, equalizing the pressure between the inside space and the outside space so that the building doesn't collapse.
Oh.
That's essentially, that's essentially how they work. And and in this instance, I think we'd probably propose they make different kinds of flood vents. Some of them are wide open. And in this day and age, you want to have, you don't want to allow cold air into the basement. So these will be flood vents that are air sealed.
Okay, well, that's that's interesting. Thank you for that. And then one, one design question. You're pulling the the cloud boards down over over the the concrete just as a sort of as a design element, not for any sort of functional.
Correct. Yeah, we're trying to hide as much as that concrete foundation as we as we can. So pulling it down real low.
All right. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swan.
Yeah, um, you know, as it was said, I don't see any new nonconformities. Actually, I think it's a nice plan. It's set back from both sides. It's kind of barely visible in the back. It's very clear. So I have no questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chagman.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. I had one quick question. I don't know if it's the architect or Attorney Mead. Try to tell from the drawings, it looks as though the deck is slightly below the elevation of the first story of the main house and the addition, but I I'm assuming the addition and the main house first floor are at the same elevation. And I think it was given to us as fifteen eight off of off the water.
Yeah, that that's correct. They're intended to be the same elevation and the deck is a step down from that.
The deck is a step down.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chagman, Mr. Bennet.
No questions here.
Thank you, sir. And I'm the same. My my step down deck question was answered. And colleagues covered the rest, so I have no further questions. We can move on to deliberations now and keeping in mind that this is a special permit for nonconformities. And we keep our discussions around the pertinent items in in making a finding. So we start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I think that we've gotten quite a lot of information here and, you know, ticked off the boxes to make a good record for this application. And I think it's clear that we have no addition of any new nonconformity with respect to this application. And I think that the proposed changes set forth in the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. So with that, I can support this.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swan.
I agree and can also support this application.
Fantastic. Mr. Chagman.
Great presentation. Nice design. I think this is a, this is a great improvement and I can support the application.
Excellent. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I echo those comments. The criteria for the special permit for nonconformities have been met. And I can support this tasteful application.
Excellent. I can as well, for all the reasons stated. One thing that didn't come up in discussions and now I'm out of order a little bit, but the conservation commission review is required, but that really doesn't affect our decision tonight. I don't know what the the schedule is on that review. I wonder if I could ask that question a little out of order, but.
Mr. Moore, I could probably address that. Sure. I suspect that it's going to be similar to the project next door, which was a determination of applicability. I don't think we're going to be back into the flood zone, I mean, into the resource area at all or the buffer zone. So we would probably have that same determination made.
And when is the review scheduled for or is it not scheduled?
No, it would be a review by Julia first.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. And again, for all the reasons stated by my colleagues, I find this, I find myself able to support this, so. With that, we'll close deliberations and we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion. This is Ken Swanton. I I move to approve the special permit for nonconformities application for one sixty one Water Street, file number twenty twenty one dash thirty three.
I second that motion.
I have motion made by Mr. Swanton, second by Mr. Bennet. And we'll go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman. Unmuting. Mr. Chagman, I didn't hear you. We'll go to Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Moore is a yes. Mr. Chagman still muted?
You can't hear me?
Now I can. Yep.
Okay, yes.
I didn't want to speak for you. I thought you were a yes, so. Oh, oh, yes, the application is approved. Five votes yes, so. We move on to the next. That's three sixteen High Street. Arthur Russo, Carol Lisa Mead, me Talan and Costa. We have two in front of us, one application twenty one twenty one dash thirty five, a dimensional variance. To construct addition in a rear yard, a corner lot extending an existing nonconformity and creating a new nonconformity. That will be followed by twenty twenty one dash thirty four special permit for nonconformities to construct an addition. Same thing in the corner lot extending a new nonconformity and creating a new, I mean, existing nonconforming and creating a new nonconformity. I assume we'll be addressing both of these at once and we're voting on them separately. Might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for the record, Lisa Mead, me Talan and Costa, thirty Green Street, New Report, on behalf of the applicants, Arthur and Veneta Russo. And with me this evening also is David from Nutter Architects, who will be going over the architecture. Currently, on this property at three sixteen High Street, there's a single family home. It's located in the R two zoning district and the DCOD overlay district. And it's at the corner of High Street and Forester Street. Many of you might recognize you turn down Forester Street and it's got quite the quite a very nice backyard and gardens. Forester Street serves as the primary front yard because it has a longer frontage, making the side opposes that opposite that the rear yard. The property is preexisting nonconforming for lot area and front setback on the High Street side, which is the secondary front setback. So the lot area is required to be ten thousand square feet and the property has nine thousand three hundred and sixty one. Front yard setback is supposed to be twenty five feet and the property, the house is set back one point two feet from High Street. The original structure was constructed in seventeen forty, according to the assessor's records. The district data sheets say seventeen seventy five. Nonetheless, it still obviously falls under the DCOD requirements. It is listed as contributory in the district. However, we don't trigger the DCOD requirements because less than twenty five percent of the existing walls are being removed, only thirteen point one percent. So the DCOD special permit is not triggered. The proposal will have a front setback. The front setback to be off of from High Street at thirteen point one feet by the addition on the left hand side of the structure. And so while it doesn't have the same nonconformity of one point two feet, it doesn't quite have the twenty five feet, obviously, and will be at thirteen point one feet. So we're extending that nonconforming setback, but not with the same intensity. Also, the addition is five hundred fifteen square feet, so that triggers the special permit for nonconformities. Lastly, it will be ten feet. The addition is proposed to be ten feet from the rear yard. As a reminder, that is the yard line opposite Forester Street where twenty five is required. If this were not a corner lot and High Street was the front yard, that right hand side, excuse me, left hand side or northerly side would be a side yard. However, it's not under the ordinance. It's a rear yard and twenty five feet is required. And we'll have a ten foot some setback and we're seeking a variance for that. So if you go to the next slide, please. So the proposal, as I indicated, was to construct an addition on the northerly side, northwesterly side of the structure. So here we have the house sitting at the corner of High and Forester Street. The original structure has the number one six three sixteen right on top of it. And you can see how it's only one point two feet from the sidewalk on High Street. To the left of the house is where the proposed addition, and it's a one story addition, is proposed to be attached. You can see that it is set back from the front face of the house by thirteen point one feet, but is only ten at that back corner from that rear yard. And you'll see that it's ten nine at the front corner of it because there's a slight angle at that rear lot line. The lot gets more narrow at the rear lot line from the front lot line or the 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 rear lot line, if you were on Forester Street, the right side lot line. So that's where the addition is proposed to go. What I'd like to point out is kind of the layout of this, which is really important. We're going to talk about in a little bit. But you can see there's a very formal garden area, gardens in the back. There's also a garage structure, barn in the back corner of the of the property as well. Originally, and I'm going to talk about this, there is a curb cut onto High Street, but that hasn't been used for some time. Probably because of public safety reasons, the side entry now exists where there's a gate and there's a curb cut on Forester Street. So the lot is actually accessed through Forester Street. And there's a fence that runs along the High Street side now, and it is not used for access to that rear garage. And I suspect that it's A, because of the gardens in the back, but B, because of the safety for getting in and out of High Street from this property. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David to talk about the architectural drawings.
Hi, I'm Dave Stulzats from Benjamin Nutter Architects in Topsfield, Massachusetts. Can everybody hear me all right?
Sure can.
Okay. Up right now, we have the floor plan of the proposed addition. The right hand plan shows a one story master suite, which the owners would like for purposes of aging in place. It gives you an idea of the relative scale of the existing spaces on the ground floor. All of which, actually, the front portion of the house dates from seventeen forty, as Lisa noted. We're fairly certain there was an addition added approximately ten feet by the width of the house at the at the rear of the house, which has an impact on the roof lines, which you'll see on the next slide pretty soon. Although we are dealing with two rear yards with this project, for the sake of some architectural discipline, we tried to maintain a ten foot setback from the adjoining property. The rear yard relative to Forester Street. It's a one story addition, but the roof line configuration does result in a storage attic at the second floor, which would be accessed off the bedroom there. It's not, it doesn't have suitable headroom for for future development. Can I have the next slide, Andy, please? These are the existing elevations of the house. Absent the fencing that is around the property on three sides of the property, Forester Street, High Street and the abutting neighbor. The front elevation in the the left side elevation show where the impact of the proposed addition would be. And this also demonstrates the calculation for the nonapplicability of historic review. Can I have slide seven, please? This slide shows the existing house with our proposed additions. The the drawings on the bottom, I think, express our intentions here. From High Street, we're proposing a a one story facade that would match the existing cloud boards and trim details of the front of the house, but be one story. a, a, a one-story facade that would match the existing clad boards and trim details of the front of the house, but be one-story. Uh, we're hoping to reuse one of the double-hung windows there. And then on the left side elevation, you can see the setback of the proposed addition. Matching the existing size and configuration of the windows that are currently on the house. Um, there's a currently a siding change from clad boards to shingles on the side elevations. We are maintaining that consistency. We're able to preserve one of the windows on the second floor, um, bedroom. And, um, we are also adapting the same configuration of the broken back um, roofline that, uh, the original house features. Um, I'd also like to note that for the elevations from High Street, as well as the left side of elevation from the butter, uh, there's a six-foot scent, there's a, a six-foot tall fence um, that's set back that would obscure, um, the lower portion of our proposed additions. And that is, um, that is the architectural details.
Thank you very much, David. So I'll go through the special permit criteria first. So the first criteria under section nine is that there will be no new addition of a new nonconformity. And as I indicated, um, there is no new addition of a new nonconformity, that front yard setback, the secondary front yard setback from High Street is still nonconforming, but it is not intensifying that existing nonconformity of one point two. The new setback will be thirteen point one, um, as you could have seen in the drawings. Um, the next is that the, the proposed changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure. So given the size and location of the proposed addition, we believe the board can find that it's a reasonable extension to the existing structure um, with well-regarded with regard to size and massing and scale. And there, there'll be no impact either on the existing structure or on the neighborhood. And as I noted earlier, um, we're extending that front yard setback, but not intensifying it. In addition, um, the nonconforming front yard setbacks are common with this portion of High Street, as there are many structures located closer to High Street than, um, in the, than the R-two's, uh, twenty-five-foot front yard setback would otherwise require. And if you could just skip for a minute down to, um, slide ten, Andy, I just wanted to show the board this. So here's, um, a mind maps, uh, drawing of this area. Um, as you can see, there are some on the other side of Forrester Street, that house, um, does obviously have more of a, a front yard setback, certainly not from Forrester Street. But across the street, um, it's right up against, um, the sideline. Um, same way that the, the house is right down from High Street and the house is that, the immediate house behind on Forrester Street. Um, so that's not an unusual situation, uh, for High Street residents. Um, also, through, uh, the design of existing conditions, the addition will create minimal disruption to the appearance of the existing structure. Um, it's complementary to the form of the existing structure. The materials, um, are complementary, uh, and used, um, in accordance with the existing structure. Um, as David said, the sides will have shingles and the front will have clambered as it currently exists. Uh, the existing fence off of the structure continues along High Street up to the property's boundary, uh, before changing location to go to the rear. That's not being changed at all. That will remain in place. And that fence will partially screen, um, the addition. Also, um, there are street trees and other plantings in or around High Street, uh, that will provide the pri, uh, partial screening to the proposed addition in the front of the house. And even if those trees went away or the fence went away, still this addition is an appropriate complement in both size, scale, and massing and materials and back away from the front of the facade of the house on High Street, uh, to be appropriate and certainly not substantially more detrimental, uh, to the neighborhood. And so we asked the board to consider, um, and make a finding that, uh, the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, than the existing, uh, structure. Um, I will also add in this particular comment that, um, we do have a butter support letters from three-eighteen High Street, fifty-four Forrester Street. And then, um, we also have one from, uh, three-fourteen High and three-twelve High Street. Um, as to the variance, if you Google slide nine, Andy. So the variance is for, um, actually, if you could go up to slide, uh, four for a minute, I'm sorry. So the variance is for the, uh, property line opposite Forrester Street, um, which is considered a rear yard. Um, but because the house faces High Street, it's more like a side yard, which would be ten feet, um, in the R-two. But it's being treated as a rear yard and so it's twenty-five feet. So the applicant needs a, um, needs relief for variance related to that. Um, and we believe we presented information that the board can find a hardship exists related to the structure and to the land. Uh, if this weren't a corner lot, as I just said, uh, that would be a side yard and it would be ten feet from the boundary, which of course we comply with. The lot is laid out with multiple gardens and plantings and an ornate backyard and driveway. If this addition were proposed off any other portion of the structure, structure, these striking landscape conditions, uh, would be diminished to the detriment of both the applicant as well as the public in general, who can view these, um, features when driving and walking along Forrester Street. Uh, instead, these unique conditions will be preserved by the building and the addition on the northerly side of the house, which David has commented on, they've taken into consideration. Also, um, circumstances that relate to, um, the structure, uh, being a structure that was built in existence in the late seventeen hundreds. The applicant is left with few options on how to best construct an addition, uh, without need for zoning relief. Here, the structure is nearly on top of High Street, one point two feet away from the sidewalk. It doesn't allow many options, uh, for functional additions due to the more stringent requirements for corner lots. In addition, there is the pre-existing barn that is in the rear of the lot that also has to be taken into consideration. Um, that was existing also, um, prior to the adoption of zoning. Here, any addition to the eastern side of the single-family structure makes accessing this garage impossible without significantly altering the lot, um, or the back gardens and would block the existing driveway path to the garage. Uh, that would force the use of the, um, curb cut on High Street, which, um, is certainly not, uh, as safe, um, from a public safety point of view as that curb cut on Forrester Street. So to change the access and egress for public safety purposes, um, would not, um, be helpful or beneficial to the neighborhood or the public in general. The proposal does not derogate from the intent and purpose of the ordinance as the location of the proposed addition is located in a position to cause the least amount of disruption to the existing conditions of the property as possible. Um, and as far as egress and access onto High Street and but for being a corner lot, the setback at issue would be conforming with the addition and not require variance. The proposed addition will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, nor give special considerations to this lot. Um, as there are no negative impacts on the neighbors resulting from the grant of variances. And also, as I noted earlier, if you look up and down High Street, there are, um, not, a number of homes that are within the side of rear yard setbacks um, on other corner lots. This is not a stretch to say that it appears that there are, uh, as many nonconforming structures as conforming ones along this area of High Street, the High Street portion of the city. Applicant would not be receiving a special privilege if the board granted a variance. And as a result, based upon, uh, those hardships, um, and the other criteria, we would request the board grant a variance, uh, to allow the construction of this addition on the, um, left side of the High Street face of the house. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. With the application presented, we now go to comments, public comment. Anyone like to comment? Please raise your hand electronically, wait to be called upon, unmute yourself, name an address before commenting. Don't see any hands. We'll go to the countdown. You see anything?
Nothing.
I don't either. Uh, countdown, three, two, one, public comment is over. Want to go now, close that and go to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yep.
Uh, Attorney Mead, just to, to recap, um, the sort of great deal of information, uh, that you provided to us on both applications. So with respect to the special permit for nonconformity, that is for the extension of the, uh, the nonconforming front setback for the addition, the proposed addition that will be thirteen or, yeah, thirteen or so feet setback from High Street as opposed to two feet off of High Street or two point nine feet off of High Street for the existing structure, correct?
Right. Right, so, um, the required setback is twenty-five. Um, and so it won't meet the twenty-five, but it's not as intense as the one point two.
Alright, yep, understood. And then with regard to the variance, uh, the variance relates to the, the western side boundary in that, uh, that's treated because of the fact that the frontage on Forrester Street is longer than the frontage on High Street, that's uh, Forrester Street is treated as the front yard. The western side boundary is treated as the backyard and that requires twenty-five feet. And the relief that you're seeking is to have that addition be located ten feet from the sideline, which would be the standard sideline, um, in the R-two district, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Delisle.
Okay. Okay. So I think that's, those are my, all my questions for now. I, I, I'm pretty clear on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, thank you, um. No, I think, I, I think, uh, Mr. Delisle got to some of the things I was wondering about. Um, I think as far as the special permit goes, this slide that's up shows pretty nicely that this thing is, the addition is set back, it's only one story pretty much, and it's, you know, it really doesn't have any massing issues therefore. Um, and on the variance, it is an unusual hardship situation to be on a corner lot, and I think you've dealt with it well, being ten feet off of the sideline, which is, I guess, on the corner. You have the issue, it's a, it's a rear line as well. So I, actually, I think the presentation really addressed everything well. I think it's well done and I have no questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Chagman.
The, uh, the application and, uh, I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. Um, for whatever reason, we were, we're getting that really muffled. I don't know if there's a way to improve the transmission, but just so you know. Uh, Mr. Bennet.
I just have one question and I, I think I know the answer. I just want to confirm that the front door of this home faces High Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I got the cro- correct orientation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, I do not have any, uh, further questions. Through our presentation, a couple of questions are asked that, uh, covered what I needed to know. So unless anyone has a, a, a further question before I close that. We'll close questions from the board and move to deliberations again, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Mr. Moore, can I just ask one more question?
Go right ahead. Yep.
Deliberate.
Sure.
Attorney Mead, one, um, thought that I was having during your presentation was, uh, with respect to the discussion about the fence that's there currently. And, um, when you were talking about that, I was thinking about the, um, foundation there on, on the proposed addition and how it, you know, it looks, even in the drawing, it looks so gray as compared to the stone, um, you know, that's there in the, in the, the house as it exists. Um, so I'm wondering if because you, it's sort of at the end of your presentation, you said if the fence were to come down, there would still be, you know, the setback and, and all of that. So I'm wondering if the fence were to ever come down, if it might make sense for us to discuss, uh, having some sort of stone veneer on that foundation that, that sort of mimics the, uh, the current or, or the foundation of the existing structure.
Sure, um, David, I don't know if you want to talk about the finish of that foundation at all and what your intention is.
Um, it's, I mean, we are showing a, a concrete foundation around the addition and, um, given its visibility due to the fence, um, that's, that's currently there. It's not an issue, but to your point, were the fence to disappear, um, I would be, before I would invest in a, in a veneer product that might look artificial, um, I would, I would plant the base of the addition aggressively, particularly since, um, as you know, from the floor plans that we showed, um, there's some kind of like, you know, private areas. This is, this is a master suite, so it's a series of private spaces. Also, it should be noted that the, uh, the foundation of the existing house transitions from, uh, granite, cop granite granite block at the front of the primary dwelling and changes over to brick, uh, once it turns the, uh, once it turns the sides, which my elevations demonstrate. Frugal Yankees. So if we were to use a veneer product on, on the existing addition, um, I might propose, either a, a thin brick veneer to match the existing, um, or, you know, even a, a waterstruck brick that is similar to the original brick that was used on the house foundation. I would prefer to keep it as concrete because I think that's going to give us the best performance and it's, uh, it's visual. It's visual impact is, can be mitigated, um, by measures that aren't connected to the structure if necessary.
So, um, the, the applicant, thank you, David and, and Mr. Delisle, you know, the applicant is fine with either the, the brick that has just been suggested or, um, the, the, uh, the landscaping. You know, what, whatever your, your choice is there. Obviously, they take great pride in the landscaping around the property.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's so noted. Um, I'm not trying to, it's not my intention to, you know, uh, drive up their costs and i- and if the fence i- i- if the, if the, the, you know, the representation is the fence is going to remain, that's enough for me. I was just, you know, curious about i- i- it being such a high visibility, um, location that if the fence were to go, they would probably need something, something would need to be done there to, to make it look more appropriate.
Yeah, there's, there's certainly no present intention to have the fence removed.
Alright, Mr. Delisle, are you good? Any further questions?
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Okay. Uh, so with that, we will close, uh, questions and now move to reopen deliberations. So you may as well kick it off.
With regard to the variance, uh, piece, my thoughts on, on the variance piece are that this is our, you know, our, our corner lot situation in Newburyport where we, we typically, um, take the position that, you know, absent something really crazy, um, that the, the fact that we have a corner lot situation, uh, you know, is, is our hardship, um, but for the fact that it was a corner lot, it would be a ten-foot, um, setback here and that would be fitting with the proposal. So I think that with respect to a variance here, um, the conditions are unique to these corner lots, um, that if we were to strictly apply the ordinance here, it would create a, a situation where the applicant would be deprived of at least the reasonable use of this portion and of, of the, of the side yard for this purpose. Uh, these conditions are certainly not the fault of, of the applicant and, um, I don't think that there's a grant of, of special privilege here, um, in that as discussed, if it were not on a corner lot, the ten yard, uh, the ten back would be uh, sufficient. So I think with respect to the variance piece, I think we're okay here, in my opinion. And with respect to the special permit, uh, there's no creation of a new nonconformity here and And I think that this proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, it, it looks like it'll be a nice, uh, complimentary, uh, piece to the existing structure. So I can support both the variance application and the special permit application.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Well said. I move on to, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Uh, yeah, I think Mr. Delisle stated well, this is a classic corner lot variance. Uh, I too can support that variance. On the special permit, I think I mentioned earlier, I think they did a nice job with the massing by setting the addition back and having it be smaller. So I too can support the, uh, special permit. So I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of both applications.
Mr. Chagman?
I agree. Uh, kudos to Mr. Delisle for going through, uh, the variance requirements and the special permit and, uh, great presentation, nice addition. Uh, I can support both applications.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I would agree with the analysis set forth by Mr. Delisle and my colleagues. The, the home appears to, to have its quote, "front yard" on High Street. That being the case, the side yard requirement would be 10 feet. So I feel it as being consistent with, uh, the realities of how the house sits despite the fact that the technical front yard might be enforced. I also find that, uh, and, and I'm mindful of the importance of High Street as an important street in our, uh, community. But, uh, this is a tasteful addition and it certainly is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and, uh, I fully support, uh, both requests here.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I would agree for all the reasons that have been, uh, elucidated by my, by colleagues. Um, I think slide nine was, was very thorough in covering of the variance and, and the hardship. And again, as we've all said, corner lots present this often. And, uh, I'm also happy to see, I think aging in place is a, is a really important thing to consider when, uh, when a addition is, is being, uh, proposed. I think that's a solid thing for any community. So I can also support, um, both applications. So with that said, I'm looking for a motion, a motion on the dimensional variance and, uh, and then we'll follow up with the special permit for nonconformities.
I'll make a motion that the request for variance application number 2021-35 or 316 High Street be approved.
I'll second that, Mr. Delisle.
Motion to approve the dimensional variance made by Mr. Bennet, uh, seconded by Mr. Delisle. I'll also add in that, um, this application does not seem to trigger a tree and sidewalk ordinance as an aside. But in front of us, we have, um, motion and seconded to approve the dimensional variance. We go to a vote now. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Yes, all in the affirmative, the variance is approved. Um, and we now move on to the special permit for nonconformities.
This is, um, Mr. Shagnon. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities. Application for 316 High Street, docket 2021-34.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Uh, motion to approve special permit made by Mr. Chagman, seconded by Mr. Swanton. Now go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's again, all in the affirmative, application for special permit, nonconformities is also approved for 369. Thank you, everybody. We now move on to the last application in a public, uh, hearing tonight for 20 Atwood Street. Alexandra and Mary Bruce Ray Grant, Carebly Samid. If she can still do another one tonight, uh, at least from me, Talim and Costa. Again, we have a dimensional variance followed with a special permit, um, demolish it to, demolish two existing detached accessory sheds and construct a new shed and two small one-story additions to a house, increasing lot coverage in excess of 25%. Might we hear from the applicant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I just might add that I almost didn't make it because somebody, when they were leaving the building, turned the lights off on me, so I had to figure out that for a moment. So, um, Lisa Mead, meet Talim and Costa, 30 Green Street, in New Report for the applicant Alexandra and Mary Bruce Ray Grant, uh, for their property at 20 Atwood Street. And with me, uh, this evening also is, um, David Keery, who is the architect on this project. Uh, the Ray Grants are proposing to renovate and add on to this single family home. You can go to the first slide, Andy. The proposal, uh, the property is listed in, or located in the R2 zoning district and the DCOD district. Uh, the structure was built in around 1810 and is listed as contributory on this district data sheets. Uh, the property is nonconforming for square footage. The, uh, district requires 10,000 and there is 5,064. It requires 90 feet of frontage and there's 65 feet, point 34. It requires a rear setback of 25 feet and there's 16.9. And a front setback of 2.8 feet exists and there's 25 feet required. For the existing shed, six feet is required, but there has a 1.9 foot side setback. Uh, there is no trigger, um, for the DCOD here. We are removing less than 25% of the exterior walls. Uh, the Ray Grants are proposing to remove the existing sheds. Um, and you go to the next slide, please. And in place, construct a new eight-foot by 14-foot shed, uh, which will intensify the nonconforming side yard setback. They're also proposing to add a small one-story 14-foot by eight and a half foot to the bump out on the west side of the structure. We're going to go over that in a minute. And a similar size addition to the rear of the bump out and we're going to go over that. The lot coverage will be increased from 24.3% to an excess of the requirement at 30.2%. That requires variance. The applicant will be removing 13.3% of the exterior walls and so therefore the DCOD is not triggered. If you can go to the next slide, please. So this house is on Atwood Street and so if you're walking from, uh, federal over to Lime, uh, it would be on the right-hand side of the street. Um, and you know that many of the houses on Atwood Street are, um, are close to the street and are close to one another with smaller lots. You can see here, uh, the existing location of the two sheds, um, on the westerly lot line and the replacement. Um, I will tell you, the idea is to get some outdoor, um, storage space that doesn't currently exist. Those are really basically trash and small tool sheds, um, without putting a garage up. So you're not seeing a proposal for a garage here, which I would say to you that the Ray Grants would love to have, but they are not proposing that. In addition, you can see there's currently a, a bump, I'm going to call it a bump out and David can talk to you a little bit more professionally about that. But so there's an addition, a proposed one-story addition that goes in the front of the bump out, um, towards the street. And one that goes and kind of fills in that corner in the rear of the property. You can also see from the site plan that that rear lot line is not a square lot line. And so when you put that bump out on, and I'll talk about this in a minute, it actually gets closer to the lot line in the rear, um, because the house is mostly square to the street. So it automatically gets closer to the rear lot line. Similarly, the westerly lot line, uh, does not run exactly perpendicular to Atwood Street and goes, uh, runs a little bit to, uh, the northeast. And therefore, when you try to square up the shed, it does not sit square against the side lot line. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David, um, to go over, um, the proposed architectural drawings.
Uh, thank you, Lisa. Uh, David Keery of Keery Design and New Report. And, um, the Ray Grants hired me to help them, um, come up with a, a modest addition, um, to their home, uh, one story. Uh, to, uh, allow them, uh, I, I heard it'll be a little bit before the aging in place. I think they'd probably say that it's nice to have, uh, a mudroom, first of all, uh, which was not, uh, present in the existing home. The, um, if you go back to the site plan just for a second, if you don't mind, please. On that side addition is a kitchen, that, that L, that, that goes in the westerly direction. And, um, uh, the kitchen i- i- is fairly modest, actually. Um, the, the main house, which they're, they, they love and, uh, are, they are old house lovers, uh, th- they wanted to keep that fairly intact. And there's some nice detailing inside and that, that lays out, uh, for three floors, like many of the federals, a, a front room, beautiful front room, beautiful, uh, back room and, and a stairwell in between. Uh, and with a front door, really the front door is on the side there. That's the main entry that guests would come in. So the back, uh, the back L, uh, area had a door directly into the kitchen with no place to, uh, take shoes off. There's also a laundry in the basement currently, which, uh, back to the aging in place thing. Uh, I, I'm aging in place and would love to have the same thing in New Report. Yeah, a, a first floor or a second floor, perhaps laundry. In the case of their home, they, they really had the, the place to put it was, was first floor. So that front bump out, which is roughly, uh, the, the eight by 14 is, is two rooms. It's a, uh, the, the usable space, finished space within each of those is about six and a half feet by seven and a half feet. One is just enough for, for a modest laundry and one is enough for a modest mudroom. And then you would enter, uh, you know, from that into the new, into the new kitchen area. And they propose a, uh, a bump out in the rear to allow for a table in that kitchen area. There's then a, a little sitting area study to the right of that, uh, which, um, I, I can, uh, just show from the outside, um, next. The photos might be helpful if we could just jump down quickly and quickly look through those, number nine, uh, in the slide. That's the view of the existing driveway and you can see, uh, that rear addition, uh, a later addition from the, from the, uh, federal is what we're talking about adding to. And to the right, you can see the front shed, uh, that front shed is, uh, uh, four feet by seven feet. Um, and that has a little bit of height to it. You can see the fence is six feet, the, the shed is about the same. So it's quite small, not a whole lot of room to put things in and they do need a little more space there. The one directly behind it, which we'll see, uh, even go to the next photo, please. Uh, number 11, there's the rear shed. That's basically just a trash and recycling shed on the rear. And that's their rear patio. As you can see, the rear, uh, area that we're going to be filling in will come off of what is a, uh, basically a woodshed there. There's about four feet of depth there, three and a half inside that. That will become part of the living space and, um, will extend, uh, around the corner to meet up with, uh, that, that rear addition to the, to the left of it. Um, go to the next slide, please. Number 12, and we see just from the other side, there's really nothing being done to this side, except you'll see they have a, an old, uh, or not as old as the old chimneys, a, a later addition of a concrete block chimney, uh, that basically exhausts their, um, their furnace, which they would like to get rid of and restore the, the proper detailing up top there. And then you can go to the next slide, please. And that's just a view from the other side. Really nothing will change at all from this side. Um, going back to then the elevations, uh, up to number six, I believe, uh, or five, thank you. We're looking now at the, um, existing, uh, north and existing south elevations. I guess we'll start with the north to the right, top right side, where, um, you, you know, the driveway is down below that, what we're showing is the, the, uh, one-story eight-by-14 addition, which the window to the right of that is in the mudroom, the window to the left of that is in the laundry room. Uh, the gate, uh, is between the two and we're, we're doing a new shed, uh, to match the architecture with the hip roof. Uh, there on, on the left side, you can see the existing, um, south elevation and the proposed cell, south elevation again. The shed, uh, has a double door out to the, to the, to the patio, rear patio. And then the, um, the addition opens the house, uh, hopefully nicely for them, uh, to, to the light and view of their backyard, which is a really sweet, uh, little patio that they enjoy and, and would like a little better access to both visually and, and, uh, and, and, in pro- programmatically. Uh, number six, please, uh, on the slides. Shows, uh, the view from, uh, we're not seeing the shed. This is as if we're peeking over the fence, but the shed is not in our way, looking at, um, that rear addition again. We've had neighbors, uh, all comment favorably on this, uh, it's pretty modest, uh, the front piece. Is where the new entry is to a mudroom and to the right, you can see, uh, the kind of a bay window going around, looking at the yard, um, compared to up top where the, the existing situation is, where the door enters directly into a kitchen, um, in that case. And then the last, uh, uh, slide eight gives a, uh, a better visual, number eight, please. Uh, gives, uh, a little 3D study of that. So there again, we see, uh, on the right side, uh, existing top, and below that, the hip roof, uh, addition for the, for the, uh, mudroom and laundry and, and shed. And then, uh, to the left side, we see the existing rear building and then the proposed rear addition, uh, to allow, uh, better use of, of the yard and, um, and kitchen area. And, uh, uh, the, the, they plan to, uh, uh, upgrade their, their windows as well, uh, and, um, have divided light windows more in keeping with, with the character of the home. Again, I said, this is, I think their third old home. They've, they've, um, renovated several in other parts of the country and they're, they're very excited to live in this one. And, um, hopefully the, the architecture and, and the, uh, and the layout is, uh, pleasing to the board. I, I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you, David. So, um, we'll go through the special permit criteria first. So the first part of the special permit criteria is that there are no new nonconformities, um, except in this instance, the one that we request, uh, relative to the variance for a lot coverage. And there aren't any, uh, what we're actually doing is intensifying that existing rear yard setback. And as I pointed out in the site plan and David has shown you in various models, um, that we're keeping the same plane of the existing at, um, 16.9. Um, however, because that rear lot line runs in an angle, uh, it becomes 15.3. And so the required rear yard setback is 25, so it's currently nonconforming. And so we're intensifying and extending that, um, a little bit. Additionally, um, and so the lot shape actually contributes to that, um, that extension and intensification. The second is that the, uh, shed will also be longer than the existing sheds. And so it will be extended along the side lot line, uh, the, this, the shed nonconformity will be extended along the side lot line. Uh, the second part of that criteria is that the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure. I think as you can see through, uh, the detail that David has provided, uh, and you know, quite frankly, uh, the Ray Grants came to me, uh, more than a year ago, pre-COVID, um, to talk about doing work on this property. And I know they've been working with David for a long time and they have taken great care to make sure that they are doing the appropriate additions to this house. So they've gone to great lengths to keep the size and scale of the pros, proposed additions in keeping with the historic nature of the house and other homes on Atwood Street, uh, while still providing, uh, more essential living space for them. We, we believe that given the proposed, uh, design and the limited encroachment on any of the surrounding homes, uh, while keeping in mind the design and scale of the home, the board can find that the proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, and so while the shed is larger, as I noted, than the existing shed, um, it basically starts to act as a fence along that side of the property line. Uh, but it will be a more uniform structure and will be in keeping, as you note, as David noted, with the hip roof, uh, with the design and scale of the, um, of the home and the additions on the home. So with that, um, we believe that the proposed additions, uh, will not be substantially more detrimental than, uh, the existing, um, structure in, within the neighborhood. The next, um, is the request for the variance. And here, uh, the applicant has, uh, no outdoor storage space. Uh, and they're working to provide sufficient practical space, uh, for the home as well. And so the combination of the two, um, additions and the change in the shed, uh, lead to a 5.2% um, excess over the required 25% lot coverage with an ending lot coverage of 32 point, uh, 30.2%. And so the question is, what is the hardship? And in this instance, the structure is the- And so the question is, what is the hardship? And in this instance, the structure is the hardship related to the lot coverage. Variance request. So but for the historic nature of the structure, the applicant might attempt to add the additional living space. On two floors, as David noted, you know, maybe you could have a second floor. You know, laundry room, for example, but in doing so, it certainly reduced the lot coverage. However, the applicant does not want to diminish the historic nature of the of the home or the later later added salt bucket. Salt box addition to the side of the home. So by being sensitive to the original structure and the historic addition, they have intensified the lot coverage. Also, here, the property is both an odd shape and has the structure that is unique. I noted the odd shape of the lot in the back. And so how one fits the proposals on that lot, you know, will impact certainly the lot coverage. The proposal does not derogate from the intent, the purpose of the ordinance as the additional lot coverage. Given the nature of the addition and shed will help maintain local property values, given how they're designed. Further, the proposed change will not be detrimental to the neighborhood as there will be no negative impacts on any of the neighbors as a result of granting the variance. Indeed, the most impacted neighbor has provided a letter of support. The closest structure to the shed. The closest structure to the shed is similarly close to the lot lines. That is. The structure on the opposite property is also very close to the lot lines. The proposal is entirely consistent with this densely part of the south end. Both the neighbor and the applicant will continue to be able to access their sides of the buildings as well. There's finally, there's no special privileges being granted to the applicants. As the proposal is consistent with the surrounding properties, which have excess of lot coverage. And location near the lot lines. Additionally, the applicant is. Has worked closely with their neighbors. They've received a letter of support from twenty Atwood Street. That is a a multi-family home that is owned by the Coulter Johns. You've seen that letter support seventeen Milk Street, which is behind twenty Atwood Street. Has also provided a letter of support. So we believe that the applicant has shown that there is hardship. Related to the structure, namely its age and the need to be careful about how additions are applied to the structure. And that it would not be inconsistent with the neighborhood or special privilege to grant that variance. And in addition, that the board find that the proposed additions are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Than the existing structure and issue a special permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, attorney me. At this point, we will turn this meeting over to public comment. Again, a reminder to raise raise your hand electronically and when you're called upon on mute, name and address clearly before you comment.
Mr. Chair, the first person we have is Connie Preston.
Okay.
Hi, this is Constance Preston, I'm the owner of eighteen Atwood Street. I bought the Ray Grants to the west and am arguably the most impacted of butter. With this proposal. I I just wanted to attend tonight to speak in support of this project. While I could have never anticipated it would take three hours of a ZBA meeting to show such support. The Ray Grants are really wonderful neighbors and have been really fantastic in including us in every step of this plan and. Yeah, I'm passionate enough about being supportive of this that I sat through three hours of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Preston. Welcome to our world and appreciate your patience. Unfortunately, these things can be long, especially this format seems to lend that as well. Anyone else wish to comment?
Next person we have is Tom Coulter John.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Tom Calder John, sixty four Federal Street. My wife and I, my wife Linda and I own the property right next door at twenty two twenty four Atwood Street. We've reviewed the plans. And I have to tell you that. These neighbors are delightful. We've seen neighbors come and go, but but these folks have put in. Attention to detail. They put time and effort into reaching out to people. And the plans that they came up with are. I I would say minimal. It it's this is not a big project. It may seem that way to them because of the the time and so forth, but. I thi- I think the prob- the project complements the building. So I I wish them luck on this. My wife and I are both supportive. So give it a whirl. They they're they're great people and this is a min- a miniscule project in the grand scheme of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter John.
Not seeing other hands raised at this time, Chair.
All right, we'll give this a. With the late hour, we'll give this a quick three count. Three, two, one. All right, we'll close question, I mean, a comment from the public and go to questions from the board and we'll start with Mr. Delisle.
You always start with me.
I can skip. You must be tired. I've had a lot to do.
Yeah, well, you can skip me on this one.
Let's do that. We're gonna go down one in the lineup here. Mr. Swanton, you're up.
Maybe it's the hour, but this is a nice project and I don't have any questions.
Excellent. Mr. Traggon.
I guess just one clarification. I guess the variance is for lot coverage only. That we're exceeding the twenty five percent. Is that, can you confirm that? That that is the variance?
That is correct.
And. Is. All of the lot coverage increase. Because of the additions. I mean, it seems like you should get a little bit of a reduction in. One of the sheds must have counted in the previous lot coverage, yes?
Well, the the two sheds both counted in the previous lot coverage, so the the new shed is a little bit bigger than the two of them combined. And then that with the addition, right?
And that makes it the five, five percent over. Okay.
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traggon. Mr. Bennet.
I have one question. I. Can you, can you? Are you losing any parking as a result of this?
No, Mr. You can go back up to the site plan, Andy. There's there's going to be two. There's two parking places there now. There will be two. In the, well, no, because the shed is in the way, so you can't. Right, so you can see there's no real loss of parking there. Mr. Bennet, is that better for you?
Yeah, I I'm just trying to understand if you're if if this will result in losing a spot, a parking spot, that's all.
No.
Yeah, the the additions are primarily where where they are now, they're going to be primarily over. You can kind of see where the driveway is and it's quite long. They're primarily over planting, planting beds.
I see that. Thank you. And I would also thank you for the 3D pictures. I. I truly appreciate those. Really is true that a picture tells a thousand words.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennet. I I thought it was a thorough presentation. I don't have any questions. And I'll now go back to Mr. Delisle, who's had time to gather himself.
Oh, thank you. I was gathered before.
I'm sure you were.
So I have a couple of questions that relate to the variance piece. I don't have any questions as it relates to the special permit. What, what in, what in fact is is the hardship here? And how does the, how would the, how does the literal enforcement of the lot coverage? Piece of the ordinance create a hardship?
So if the applicant, if the hardship is related to the structure, which is allowable under both section ten and forty A, section ten and the ordinance, section ten. And that is, it's the it's a historic structure and the way it's laid out. And so. If if the applicant wanted to go up. Instead of putting two small, one-story additions. It would not trigger the lot coverage hardship. And so, but it doesn't want to do that because it wants to be respectful of the historic structure. And so that's the relationship between the lot coverage and the historic structure hardship.
Okay, so the applicant doesn't want to. Do.
Well, because it would have a detrimental impact on the historic structure.
Okay, okay. And then. How does, how does, how does granting a variant? With respect to the lot coverage, not derogate from the intent. Or purpose of the lot coverage piece of the ordinance?
Because in, you know, I I would say that in a combination of things related to the the neighborhood and. You know, the intent and purpose of the lot coverage is to make sure that there's still open space in the area. That there's not too much impervious surface. And it's, you know, and and how it relates to the land around it. And in this instance, both of these additions in the shed, which is actually just a little larger than the existing sheds, are modest. And, you know, they're not, they're not adding any more driveway. The open space in the back is consistent. And while it's over the the. Front building is over an existing sidewalk and a little bit of planting bed. The back building is over a little bit of the patio. So they're not really taking green area away from the lot coverage. And so if you combine that with what it's like in the rest of the area. And the historic structure, it doesn't derogate from the intent and purpose of the ordinance.
I'm sorry, are you, it the variance is for lot coverage, not open space, right?
No, that, yeah, that's correct, but lot coverage goes to like the impervious areas, right? Things, things with roofs on that cause runoff and and things of that nature.
Yeah, right, but there's another, there's another requirement called open space requirement.
Open space. That's correct.
Yeah, but we're talking about lot coverage.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I really don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up question? This is Ken Swanton.
Right ahead.
Mr. Delisle got me thinking about this variance for coverage. And I realize the applicant is trying to do two little one-story things rather than a taller two-story thing. I guess my question is, I assume this garage, this pretty big, not garage, this this shed. Eight by fourteen shed also counts the lot coverage. Is that, you mentioned that it was actually, you know, the two additions to the house that was pushing this house. Over the twenty five percent lot coverage, but what if, is is the shed actually doing it too? I mean, if there was no shed here, what would the coverage be?
So I don't know who just said that it would.
It would still, this is David. Yeah, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Go, so you have an eighteen, an eight by fourteen shed. Right. David can answer the specific question about the lot coverage, but it's a combination of all of them. I I I didn't mean to say, Mr. Swanton, that the shed wasn't part of that for sure. The lot coverage goes to the shed and to the additions. David, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, they're all fairly similar and all of them were kind of important. One being the mudroom use and laundry use at first floor. The other being, there's, there's no garage, obviously, and that that was actually the first meeting we had. Could we do a garage? And we we felt that a garage was just asking too much. You know, the existing lot coverage, when we started, was right at that borderline between the twenty five. Between what would have been a special permit and what would have been a variance. It was at twenty four point. Excuse me, I'm not reading this. It's twenty four point eight or twenty, you know, existing, if you look at the table there. So, you know. Therein lies some of the problem. So each one of those additions being a hundred square feet, roughly, the the shed is a hundred and twelve. Mudroom, mudroom's the same, a little, and then the bump out toward the back is the same.
I just have a very, I have, I just have a very simple question, which is. Do you need the variance for the shed? If there was no shed here, would you still be asking for a variance?
We would. If we added, I think if we added anything more than thirty square feet, we would have needed a variance, yeah, because of the twenty five percent. What used to be thirty percent in this, you know.
I I understand, but if the two existing sheds went away. And there was no shed at all, would there still be a need for a variance? Is really what I'm trying to ask here.
Yes, anything more than thirty six square feet, you know, four feet by nine feet, let's say, added to this entire lot, it triggered the variance.
Because. Taking into account that if the two other sheds went away, wouldn't that get you some headroom there or?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be enough, I think, is what David is saying.
Yeah, if. If if they did neither addition and maybe did the shed.
No, no, I'm saying if they did both, if they did both additions and had no shed, would it be over twenty five percent?
It would be, no question.
Okay, so this variance is for the additions and the shed basically just, you know, exacerbates it basically.
Yeah, with the sheds included, they were at the twenty four point, whatever it says there. I'm sorry, my my eyeballs are not as good as they used to be. And I'm not, I'm looking at the. The existing.
Twenty four, twenty four point three, excuse me, twenty four point three, and which which correlated to, I believe, thirty six square feet. Yeah.
They could have done a six by six anywhere, any six by six block anywhere and kept those existing sheds.
And the variance is being argued because it's it's supposed to be, you know, soil condition, slope or unusual lot shape. I mean, this is pretty close to a rectangle. Are you saying that the angles aren't exactly ninety degrees, therefore it's unusual?
Miss, if I could, that's, that's kind of shorthand. The shorthand variance requirements, right? The actual variance requirements include structure. So the shape to fire for soil condition or topography of such land or structures. And especially affecting such land or structures.
So which of those soil condition shapes or whatevers are affecting the structure?
So the structure is a historic structure. That that's the issue, right? So so that's that's the point. Such land or structures.
Okay, all right. I think we've perhaps belabored this enough, but I appreciate the Mr. Delisle opening up the question. I just had those additional questions, so I I'm done with questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from anyone? All right, close that part and move to deliberations. And again, we'll move discussing both variants and special permit as we did for the prior. So. Mr. Delisle, would you like to kick off? Do you want me to move?
Sure, no, I I'm happy to kick off.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Relative to the to the variance. I'm not in support of the variance. I I. I think that the. The lot. Area. And the area of the existing structure. It it is what it is. And I I just don't think that the applicant has met the the burden to. To go forward on a variance, in my opinion. Relative to the. Special permit, if it were to get there, I. Would be okay with the prong that there is. It's not something that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. But relative to the other, there is an existence of a new nonconformity, in my opinion, there would be. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, my initial reaction, as I said in the beginning, was I kind of liked the proposal, but I think, Mr. Delisle, I've brought up a.
Mr. Delisle had brought up a very interesting line of questioning on variances. Variances have a high bar. And I think he's made some excellent points. So I I agree with him that the special permit, if it gets there. It it looks appealing to me, but I just do have an issue with creating a variance here. And that's where I am.
Understood. Mr. Tragman.
Yeah, I I guess I'm, I'm I'm in the same camp. Although I think the project is is excellent. I think, you know, it's, it is. Small enough that. It it would look great on this house. Walk by this house all the time. I, you know, I think the special permit I could probably support, but the variance, I think that. As my colleague said, it's a little bit tougher hurdle and. I I don't know how to fix it. I I would love to see the project go forward, but I don't see where you can, you can take enough building away to get this to work. So so I'm in a quandary, but I I agree with my colleagues. I'd have a hard time supporting the variance part of the application.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I I must disagree with my colleagues. This certainly is at the outer limits of. Any variance that I would consider and it's certainly true that the criteria to. Issue a variance are rigorous. But I. I'm trying to look at this in the context of that neighborhood and. What I perceive as the density in that neighborhood and. When I go through the criteria, I take attorney meets. Point regarding the. The criteria number one, which is that the structure itself is unique and preserving its historic nature. And that building up. Is, is a consideration that, in my view, satisfies that first criteria. And then as I go through the others, although it is a close call. Looking at this. With my own lens, I find this project to be consistent with the neighborhood. Tasteful and in no way departs from the. You know, it's not a special privilege and it's, I believe it's, it's consistent with other properties in the district. And does not dishonor the rigor that we must apply when we are asked to grant a variance.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I think I I lean more towards Mr. Bennet's thoughts on the variance. And and then my colleagues are correct, it should be a high hurdle for a variance, but I. I do see it through the lens of, of, as was highlighted prior, that. The, the structure itself and how it's positioned and how that jut out was added to. It makes, makes any changes hard to do even in a modest way without affecting. The lot coverage. So I kind of think that it's, it's unique. Conditions are unique to this lot, so I I could also. I think support the variance in this case, especially given that the back portion is tucked away in such, in shaped in such a way that. I I don't see it really creating a big problem on. On density on anyone's part. So that being said, though, straw poll being what it is.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we'd request a continuance to your July twenty seventh meeting, please.
Very good. Applicant has requested a continuance for both these applications to our July twenty seventh meeting. Now, do we have a motion?
I'll move that the application be continued to our July twenty seven, two thousand twenty one meeting. It's Greg Bennet.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
All right, so we have a motion. To continue the application for variance, twenty one twenty one dash thirty seven and special permit twenty twenty one dash thirty eight for twenty Atwood Street. To our seven twenty seven meeting. It was seconded by Mr. Swan and I'll call roll. Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Tragman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
I also, yes, on the affirmative, the application has moved to our July twenty seventh meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that. Public hearings and applications are complete for the night and we'll close that portion and move to our business meeting. Which tonight consists only of approval of the minutes from six, eight, twenty one, a meeting I was not a part of. But it doesn't mean I can't take votes on, so I will be not voting on approving the minutes. But we're looking for comments right now. Does anyone have any comments amendments to the meeting, the minutes from the meeting of six eight?
This is Ken Swanton. I think they were really well written for a challenging, long meeting and I move, we approve the minutes.
Second, Mr. Delisle.
All right, motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Swan and second, Mr. Delisle and vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Tragman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
I am abstaining, but that's for the affirmative moment. The minutes are approved. That concludes our agenda for this evening. So you know what's next.
Mr. Shagnon moves to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
All right, motion to adjourn maiden seconded. All in favor. The eyes have it, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Nice work, everybody.